So it is October 21st and I'll call the North Kingstown School Committee Business Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to recess into executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of any discussions of job performance, character or physical or mental health of a person or persons, provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in advance in writing and advised that they may require the discussion to be held at open meeting pursuant to RIGL 42465A1, superintendent valuation, interim director of facilities and school safety contract. Item two, sessions pertaining to potential litigation and legal advice of collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2, employee B investigation update NEA and K level three grievance. And then item three, discussion regarding the matter of security including but not limited to the deployment of security personnel or devices, RIGL 42465A3, school safety plans. Can I get a motion to go into executive please?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will return from executive session. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. It's a pledge to abide by the United States of America and consider our public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Roll call please. Erin Earl here. Robert Kay.
Here.
Jennifer Leemont here.
Here.
Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Josh Rosso Tato.
Sadie McCann.
Here.
And the calendar please.
October 22nd, 5:30 PM, DEI Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. October 27th, 5 PM, Policy Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. November 3rd, 4:30 PM, Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. School Committee Office Hours, October 29th, 5 PM, Central Admin Conference Room. Next regular business meeting, November 4th, 7:00 PM, Central Admin Conference Room.
Okay, thank you. That'll bring us to presentation and recognitions, and so we'll turn it over to Dr. Clark.
Tonight, we have Dr. Mr. Mesnati and Dr. Clark, who will give us a presentation on the Institute's data assessments.
Good evening. Jody Clark, Director of Curriculum, and I am here first to talk about the RICAS math for 2025 that was administered in the spring. We tried to follow the same slide deck so that you could compare year over year, and I have some data over the growth and areas of increase and decrease in comparison. This is our chart of our similar size districts, size and demographics. As you can see, four districts had similar declines in math, three had increases. Portsmouth did move ahead of us with a large increase of 3.5, so we are going to look to them to find out what initiatives in the area of math they are doing to learn from our neighbors about their growth. Overall, if you click on the Math 2025 link there that's underlined, we are ranking 11th in Rhode Island for math scores for RICAS. The next slide is showing a breakdown by building, and obviously, we kept the same color coding. If red indicates that there was a decline in the number of students that met or exceeded, the green obviously indicates an increase. The asterisks in front of all of the titles indicates that there was higher than pre-COVID scores, and the stars indicate great growth. So, obviously, as you had seen on the previous slide, we did have a decrease in our math scores overall as a district, but we do want to highlight. Hamilton Elementary had an increase, and Fishing Cove had an increase, so we are happy to say to look to those two schools. Hamilton had a 3.3% increase, which is really high, and Fishing Cove had a 2.2 increase. So, kind of a mixed amount there, but we are glad to see green coming back to Hamilton and Fishing Cove. This is our comparison for grade levels across the, in comparison to the state scores. Obviously, we are always ranking higher than the state average, and while we are happy than that, we want to point out that we saw an increase in grade three scores from 60.2% in 2024 to 67.4% in 2025. Obviously, a different cohort, but an increase at the grade level, and as well in grade six, from 41.9% in 2024 to 47.4% of students meeting or exceeding in 2025. This is our RICAS math cohort analysis, so this is where we are tracking the same group of students over time. We are excited by the increase in the grade eight, the peach kind of pathway, if you follow it up. There was an increase from last year's scores of 48.3 to 51.7, and also, grade seven had an increase, that light blue immediately underneath that pathway going through, increased from last year's scores. There was a decrease, and a rather significant decrease in the grade five cohort that we are definitely looking into. 10% is rather troublesome, so we are definitely looking into that group. We are excited because this year, they have released some of the both writing tasks and the longer response tasks for math, so we can actually look at
And now, so.
Okay, okay, so we will return from executive session. The next item on the agenda is the pledge of.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, roll call please. Erin Earl here.
Robert Kay.
Here.
Jennifer Lino here.
Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Josh Rosso Tato.
Sadie McCann.
Um, in the calendar, please.
October twenty second, five thirty PM, DEI Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. October twenty seventh, five PM, Policy Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. November third, four thirty PM, Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. School Committee Office Hours, October twenty ninth, five PM, Central Admin Conference Room. Um, next regular business meeting, November fourth, seven PM, Central Admin Conference Room.
Okay, thank you. Um, that'll bring us to presentation and recognitions, and so we'll turn it over to Dr. New.
Uh, tonight, uh, we have Dr., I just promoted you, Doctor. Mr. Mesnati and Dr. Clark, um, who will, um, give us a presentation on the instance data assessments.
Good evening, Jody Clark, Director of Curriculum, and I am here first to talk about the RICAS math for two thousand and twenty five that was administered in the spring. Um, we tried to follow the same slide deck so that you could compare year over year, and I have some data over the growth, um, and areas of, of, uh, increase and decrease in comparison. This is our chart of our, uh, similar size districts, um, size and demographics. Uh, as you can see, uh, four districts had similar declines in math, three had increases. Uh, Portsmouth did move ahead of us with, with a, a large increase of three point five, so we are going to look to them to find out, um, what initiatives in the area of math they are doing, uh, to learn from our neighbors about their growth. Um, overall, if you click on the math two thousand and twenty five link there that's underlined, um, we are ranking eleventh in Rhode Island for math scores for RICAS. The next slide, uh, is showing a breakdown by building, um, and obviously we kept the same color coding. If, uh, red indicates that there was a decline in the number of students that met or exceeded, the green obviously indicates an increase. Uh, the asterisks in front of, uh, all of the titles, uh, indicates that there was higher than pre-COVID scores, and the stars indicate great growth. So, obviously, as you had seen on the previous slide, we did have a, uh, decrease in our math scores overall as a district, but we do want to highlight, uh, Hamilton Elementary had an increase, and, uh, Fishing Cove had an increase, so we are happy to say, to, to look to those two schools. Um, Hamilton had a three point three percent increase, which was, which is really high, and Fishing Cove had a two point two increase, so, um, kind of a, a mixed amount there, but we are glad to see green coming back, um, to Hamilton and Fishing Cove. This is our comparison for grade levels, um, across the, uh, in comparison to the state scores. Obviously, we are always ranking higher than the state average, and, um, while we are happy than that, we want to point out that we saw an increase in grade three, um, scores from sixty point two percent in two thousand and twenty four to sixty seven point four percent in two thousand and twenty five. Obviously, a different cohort, but an increase at the grade level. And as well in grade six, from forty one point nine percent in two thousand and twenty four to forty seven point four percent of students meeting or exceeding in two thousand and twenty five. This is our RICAS math cohort analysis, so this is where we are tracking the same group of students over time. Um, we are excited by the increase, um, in the grade eight, the peach kind of pathway, if you follow it up, there was an increase, um, from last year's scores of forty eight point three to fifty one point seven, and also grade seven had an increase, that light blue immediately underneath that pathway going through, um, increase from, from, uh, last year's scores. Uh, there was a decrease, and a rather significant decrease in the grade five cohort that we are definitely looking into, ten percent is rather troublesome, so we are definitely looking into that group. Um, we are excited because this year they are, have released, um, some of the, uh, both writing tasks and the longer response tasks for math, so we can actually look at student work samples to do an analysis, so we will have fifth grade teachers go through those, uh, released items for their students last year to look at who scored points, who, who missed points, um, and that is really helpful. We didn't have that data last year because there was a switch in platforms and RICAS didn't release it, but this year we were able to do a deeper analysis, so, uh, teachers in their common planning time will be digging further and looking at the actual released items from their students, um, that had taken the test, and the students coming in, they can also, obviously in the upper grades, take a look at the students' released items and, and do that analysis of where they need to grow, especially in, um, you know, for both their math, uh, written statements and in, uh, ELA. Uh, our subpopulation, um, I do want to note here that there was an increase, an overall increase, and we have a, a couple of further slides that break this down, but, um, shout out to, uh, special ed grew from twelve point one percent to thirteen point three, so one point two increase, uh, year over year, so that is great growth. And also our economically disadvantaged, um, students who receive, uh, free and reduced lunch increased from twenty two point six percent last year to twenty six point seven, so we want to highlight those two subpopulations. This is the breakdown of the special ed, um, meetings, again, percent of students meeting or exceeding by building. Uh, same color coding goes, uh, where you see green, and there is lots of green as compared to the reds last year, uh, there is growth, so, uh, we want to highlight those. The asterisk means that we are above, um, the pre-COVID scores, um, so great growth, and, uh, where there are double asterisks, that means the data, data was suppressed because less than five percent of the students met or exceeded. So, uh, we are excited about those results and continuing that growth in our special ed population. This is the RICAS math special ed cohort analysis. Um, year over year, again, you can see in eighth grade that peach pathway last year, the, um, the percent was suppressed because it was less than five percent, this year we're at seven percent of our students in grade eight, um, that receives special education services or meeting or exceeding. Great growth in grade seven, uh, that means they jumped over five percent. Um, there was a decline in sixth grade, um, and again, that, that grade five is a, a group, so we are definitely digging deeper into the released items of that grade five to see, um, what happened. The last, uh, slide here is our RICAS, uh, race ethnicity. Um, we do not report our American Indian, Alaskan native because it is less than ten students. And year over year, um, the populations are slightly changing if you compare these to numbers last year, but again, this is the comparison with the state data, and we are above, well above state averages in all of those sub, the race ethnicity categories. Now, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Mesnati to talk about the ELA RICAS.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Clark. Uh, here we're going to talk about the ELA scores, uh, in the RICAS area from this past spring. Just want to thank all of our students and teachers, obviously, for the great work they do and the hard work that they put forth, and, uh, testing is obviously not easy, it's a very significant challenge, um, it's not an easy test, the RICAS, and, um, the fact that our students put forth such great effort and the encouragement they get from their teachers is something that we are quite grateful for and proud of. So first off, as you note here that in North Kingstown, our scores, uh, in the ELA area did go up by four point eight percent, we're very proud of those results, very encouraged by the work that our students put forth this past spring, um, bringing us to fifty six point one percent, proficient or better, this re, leaves us ranked ninth in Rhode Island, um, across the state, and also sixth among K to twelve districts in Rhode Island, so similar to districts as, as ours. Um, in the, uh, next slide, the two thousand and twenty five RICAS ELA scores, you can see the breakdown by school, and obviously, again, the green and red color coding here represents , um, growth in green versus decline in red, as you can see, um, the ELA scores this year are looking very good, especially compared to last year where we didn't like the red bar that we saw, um, we see a turn, turnaround this year, which is very positive to see. Uh, again, this comes from a lot of hard work from a lot of folks, um, working hard to put forth effort, um, to really dig into the data, to dig into the curriculum, and to provide our students with the best instruction possible to challenge them. Um, one of the things I want to highlight here is that there was, um, a, a specific effort that we made on, um, looking into student writing and providing more opportunities for students to practice writing, um, which was done at the grades two through eight level, and we're starting to see some nice growth as a result. We still have work to do, um, as we, as we know we will, uh, because it is always a, a process that, that takes time, it's a very important skill and very challenging for kids, but we saw some nice gains, especially in, um, in grades three through six, we saw a nice jump in the writing section, subscores within the, um, RICAS ELA test, and the writing piece gets increasingly more weight as you move up in grade, so the, the higher you go in the grade level, the more writing, uh, factors into your overall score. So again, some very nice gains here, we can see the higher than pre-COVID levels, we can see, um, significant growth at, at, at many of our schools here, um, from last year to this year. We're very proud of that. All right, next slide we have here, this is, um, going to be us, uh, compared to the state, um, at different grade levels, so grades three through eight in ELA as, um, North Kingstown compares to the state, I want to highlight a couple of, um, real impressive increases, and this is by grade level, um, coming from the RICAS ELA test. At, um, at Davisville Middle School, grade six saw an eighteen point increase from last year to this year, uh, Fishing Cove in grade five saw a twenty point increase, Hamilton grade five saw a twenty-two point increase, and Quiddness at grade five saw a twenty-seven point increase, so we're very proud of those particular grades that did exceptionally well, and across the board we saw, um, we're very encouraged by, by the results we saw. This examines the cohort, similar to what Dr. Clark just said, is, as you can see, it's color-coded, representing the cohort of students as they move through the grades, um, and so you can see the progression there of, of, of different groups of kids as they move, um, through our system. Um, again, some highlights to note here, we can see, um, you know, significant growth there from, uh, over, overall across the board, from grade seven to eight, as well as from grade six to seven, um, and, and grade, um, five to six, so we see some nice, some nice, nice growth there, um, significantly across the board. Again, a couple of cohort highlights to, to point out. Hamilton cohort, that was, um, from grade four to five, saw a twenty point increase. Uh, Wickford Middle School cohort, from grade six, six to seven, saw a fourteen point increase. Wickford Middle Schools' seven to eight cohorts saw a ten point increase. Fishing Cove's four to five cohort saw an eight point increase. Davisville Middle School's seven to eight cohort, a six point increase, and Quiddness's four to five cohort, a six point increase, so we're, we're very proud of those students for, and their teachers, obviously, for, um, for showing that growth from year to year. Moving forward, our RICAS subpopulations, um, again, we can see the comparison here of North Kingstown students, uh, and the end sizes with each group to, to the rest of the state. Couple of highlights to pointing point increase in RICAS ELA, moving from last year to this year, and our special education population saw a five point increase from last year to this year in RICAS ELA. And again, uh, similar to what Dr. Clark presented, uh, this is the special ed students, um, percent meeting or exceeding in ELA, this is the growth, uh, from year to year across our different, um, schools across the district. Um, and as you can see, there's, there's quite a bit of highlights here, um, in green that show growth from, from last year to this year. Um, also you can see that there is some schools highlighted with the asterisks as being higher than pre-COVID levels, uh, for the subpopulation of students and the, uh, progress that they're making. Again, um, to highlight the special ed cohort analysis, the, uh, grouping's moving from grade to grade, um, you can see, we do have some work here to do in certain areas, uh, but we can also point to, uh, quite a few highlights of cohort, um, special education students who are, um, showing growth and improvement from year to year. Um, but obviously still, still, still work to be done, still, so a lot of, um, a lot of hard work to do, but the growth is encouraging. For our race and ethnicity students, um, this is again, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding, um, you can see there, the North Kingstown scores among the different subgroup populations, um, as well as their end sizes compared to, um, the state of Rhode Island. A couple of highlights to note here that we saw an in, eight point increase for Hispanic and Latino students, and a seven point increase for students who are two or more races, and so, again, that is, um, something noteworthy and positive. And then we have our NGSA science test, um, analysis, which I'll turn it back over to Dr. Clark.
So, looking at, at science, and again, very similar slides so that you can see the comparison between the three state assessments, um, here, uh, unfortunately, we did have a decrease overall of negative two point three percent from last year, um, with Charahoe ranking above us with their five per, five point one percent, again, we are always looking to our neighbors to find out what they are doing well and different than us, so we can learn from them, um, and, and make the changes we need. The next slide is showing by, um, building, there are quite a few that celebrate here as indicated by the stars in the green, um, where there was growth, and, um, three of the schools, obviously, are showing up, uh, higher than pre-COVID scores, which is wonderful to see, but still growth, uh, overall needed in science. Our subpopulations, um, uh, obviously this changes, this test is only administered in grades five, eight, and eleven, so we're talking a much smaller percentage of our students taking it. Um, that is why our English language learners, uh, the data has been suppressed because there were fewer, uh, than five percent meeting or exceeding, um, and also foster care was suppressed because there are fewer than ten students. Uh, by school, um, we are excited to show, um, growth. In all areas, this one's confusing me.
No, it's in all, for sure.
Okay. Yes, in all, in all buildings, um, with grade eleven and five, uh, higher than pre-COVID. And the last slide for comparison is our race ethnicity, ethnicity as compared to state data. Again, um, American Indian, Alaskan native, the, our end size is too small, and we have seen, um, some growth over the state in black or African, African American race, uh, thirty percent in two thousand and twenty four, uh, this year we are at. Oh, it was a thirty percent increase in two thousand and twenty four in two or more races. Yes, there was also growth in our Asian population from forty one point two to fifty two point two. So, obviously, different cohort of students when this test was only given every few years, so, um, hard to draw comparison year over year with that data. I'm going to turn it back to someone else.
Thank you, um, just to wrap up, uh, just to turn our attention a little bit to, toward the future, our initiative's here to support, um, future growth, continuous growth, um, our MTSS framework, we utilize the Branching Minds platform, MTSS is a, um, process we, we go through at each of our schools to identify students who are, um, in need of extra support, um, MTSS teams meet to review data, to look at student performance and track, um, growth over time, and to identify, um, potential need for interventions and, um, and progress monitoring when it comes to students and their academic needs. We'll continue to do this, Branching Minds is a terrific platform, it, it, it puts data in a very usable and user-friendly format that our teams are getting much more comfortable with, and they are using it regularly to identify and provide supports to students. Also looking at tier two reading plans at the elementary, which are being done, um, this year as we speak, uh, training took place for teachers in, um, tier two reading plans at the last PD day, um, and they're being worked on now to get, uh, tier two plans in place. Also, tier three reading and math at the middle school level is being worked on through Branching Minds. Um, just to refresh, tier three is, um, smaller percentage of students requiring, um, more supports, more, more structured supports, uh, tier two is, is a larger percentage of students requiring, um, lesser support, less intensive support. Also, we're going to continue with our writing on-demand focus by, um, embedding on-demand writing opportunities for students to take play, to take place during class time, so they can practice those skills, um, those responding to prompts, citing, analysis, um, and, and I, developing ideas in their writing, um, similar to what they, they're asked to do on the RICAS, but also just a good skill to learn for any type of writing, um, in any, in any, in any format. Um, on math, we are looking at, um, providing, professional, we are providing professional development in the building thinking classroom format, this is happening, um, right now at the middle school and high school level, um, looking at, um, building mathematical thinking tasks that are challenging the students, that engage students in, in active, um, mathematical thinking, and to really kind of focus the attention on students really practicing that math on a, on a practical level, and, um, in doing so with more cognitive load placed on the students to complete that. We're also looking at doing vertical articulation meetings in lab classrooms, we started that process last year, getting our fifth grade teachers and sixth grade teachers together so we can work on those communications happening between the elementary school and the middle school level, which we know is a very, a cha, a challenging transition in a lot of ways, um, but having those conversations around routines and, um, and, and curriculum and making sure that, that there is, um, continuity there. And finally, the Open Sci Ed, which is a new curriculum that we have adopted at the middle school level and science curriculum, um, we are in year two of implementation at the middle school level, it's, um, again, going very well, then a lot of really vibrant discussions with our middle school teachers around implementation. Open Sci Ed's very phenomenon-based, it's very, um, you know, um, based on inquiry and based on really scientific thinking. We're expanding a pilot in grade five this year, so, a couple of our grade five teachers are beginning to use Open Sci Ed and to pilot certain units within their, um, within their classrooms, and then also at the high school level, we have some early adopters, high school science teachers who are taking part in an Open Sci Ed pilot this year as well. Um, so these are kind of our looks to the future as far as initiatives to support future growth. Um, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you so much, uh, Jody and Rob, we appreciate the presentation, questions from the committee?
Um, I have a few, uh, thank you both for putting this information together. Um, I, before I ask the questions, I just want to, perhaps this by saying, like, I'm not a huge fan of standardized tests, I, I know I say this all the time, I, but because they are the only thing that we have to, like, kind of, grade quote unquote, I, I realize that, but I also want to say that this year, um, I was in, I, I recognize how much work the teachers put in, you all put in, and I was actually in the building this year, um, on a testing day, and like, you can see, like, how much, like, work everybody puts into it, so even though I don't really put a lot of stock in it, like, I, I recognize that they, they are important. Um, I was glad to hear you say, Jody, that, like, you all are going to be looking at, like, the, the schools, the districts that are, like, continually, like, improving, like, because it, Portsmouth seems to be, and I'm curious to know, like, what they're doing, so I would be interested in hearing feedback, um, from them, um, what, like, what's happening there. Um, in terms of math, um, you know, five out of eight of our schools went down, um, so I'm curious to know, like, did Hamilton and Fishing Cove do anything differently than the other schools did?
I think once teachers are able to dig deep and go through those, the, um, released items, it's really going to help, um, bring forth, you know, where the growth points were, and, and, and looking at the individual students, sometimes the scores don't mean anything until you start seeing student by student how they did and how they answered the question, so I think once we get to that level of analysis, we'll be able to have some cross conversations with the different buildings, as far as, is there anything specific to point out to show Hamilton, that, what, what the growth were in the two buildings that had growth, so, we're not there yet, but we'll get there.
Okay, great, yep.
Kind of a long Jen's follow-up thought process is, um, I'll talk to Dr. Duba about the timing, but I would love to have you all come back with some of that analysis of RICAS and the needs, um, what Portsmouth and Charahoe were doing to your point, and then kind of what the teachers thought about the data pre-budget, because that, like, I think that's where that conversation will be really fruitful, so maybe in December at some point I'll connect with Dr. Duba, but that might just be helpful to hear from you all before budget season. Um, one question, um, that I had was, when did the RICAS test change? Like, it, it's a new test, correct?
It's a new platform, so, student-facing, not a lot has changed, backend, a lot has changed, and, a, as far as what the state was able to report to us and give us has changed.
So when you're looking at two thousand and nineteen, in two thousand and twenty five, it's apples to apples?
Yes, that was also RICAS at that point, prior to that, which is why you don't see any previous data, it was a different assessment.
All right, that's what, I was just trying to make sure that, that I understood that piece. Okay, other questions from the committee?
Jen, I'm sorry, just to piggyback on, because I did have this, a similar question, because you did mention it a couple of times in your presentation about, you're going to look into, um, not only different schools, different districts, but also different schools. I, yeah, to follow up on that too, I was hoping that, like, for instance, Fishing Cove must be doing something right, they're doing a really good job, so, if you could all, you know, you, you said you were going to look into how that's working out, and obviously it's going to take some time with the teacher feedback, but it would be good to, you know, I'd love to get a report back on, you know, what you found, and how we can implement that stuff maybe to the other schools, but are, maybe struggle a little bit more.
In those big numbers that we see, nothing suppressed though, right? So if a school had a higher percentage of students that are kind of broken out as far as razor, razor ethnicity, ELA, um, special ed, like, all of that is encompassed in that bigger number though, right? So just population alone could significantly skew a school score, so I think that's something else to. So I think that's something else to consider as well. Like obviously, it could be something that they're doing differently, but also just like when you look across the board at demographics. Standardized tests often favor certain populations in that. And you can see it at both the state level and our level. So just something else to consider, like thinking about the populations of students and how that might overlay, because it's not suppressed, so.
But like it would be odd because like in terms of like special ed scores are typically lower. Like, so you would think they would be dragged down at Hamilton, at Hamilton and Fish and Cove, right? Like, so that doesn't quite.
Yeah, that doesn't, yeah.
It doesn't quite.
It doesn't track.
It doesn't track.
Well.
So, you know, so.
Some of them might though. Like Forest Park might, like, and again, not knowing the, the N of those.
Right, so that's why I'll be curious to get that, that like more detailed. So like for math, the state average has gone up since two thousand and twenty-two by like four and a half points like in total. But North Kingstown has only gone up as a whole by like point eight. And we've actually gone down by like for the past two years. So I'm like, I'm curious to know why our trajectory isn't. But I, I will say that like Davisville, Quidd, and Fish and Cove has gone up like in both math and English. So like that's great, that's like a positive trend. There is some concerning points with special ed math. Both Hamilton and Fish and Cove went, I'm sorry, Forest Park went down by like over ten points from last year to this year.
And you want, at the elementary level with the special ed where you saw some of those, I do want to point out that programs have changed drastically across buildings and movements.
Okay.
So some of that has to, but as we dig into deeper analysis, we'll, we'll be able to dig deeper into that as well.
Okay. Still on math, like the district average was like fifty-two point eight percent. And, and the subgroups aside from the gender, Asian, and white were at least twenty percent less than our average. Which, so subgroups remain a concern. And that's both math and English. So I, I know that we talk every year about the subgroups, but they're not, while they are increasing, the gap remains the same. With English, the state average has gone up since two thousand and twenty-two, not continuously. But with that, like we seem to be following the state average, which is encouraging. I will say that five out of the eight schools went up in English, which is a huge improvement over last year, which all schools went down. So like, great job, that's awesome. I'll ignore the special ed because you just said that. You did not mention what our state ranking is for the NGSA. Did you have that information?
If you click on the link on that slide. I don't know why I didn't capture that, oops. Go to the NGSA, that overview slide.
We're number eleven.
There we go, click on the slides.
Eleven?
Yeah, I clicked on it when you guys were talking.
Thank you, sorry, I don't know why I didn't do that.
That's all right.
So there's the rankings.
Eleven, okay. So we, we've gone down as a whole on that one since two thousand and twenty-two also. So last year, when you talked about what the interventions were, for lack of a better term, I know that's not the word that you used. There was a slide that said instructional support staffing includes three elementary interventionists, one middle school math interventionist, one MLL teacher, a half MLL coach, and one K through five literacy coach, which is grant-funded. How many of those positions still exist?
The three, the three interventionists that we brought on using ESAR funding are still existing and, and supporting. Again, they're flex so they can support math and reading. Oftentimes, they're supporting reading along with the reading specialists in each building because that demand is so high at a tier-three level. So they're, they're meeting with your tier-three students. And again, for MTSS, we tend to go with our screener data, which is STAR. Yes, we look at this to inform as well, but this is oftentimes really so late that we start the year on our STAR screener, which is given three times a year to progress monitor. So the literacy coach was not funded, although we tried to move it over to Title I. But we did use Title I funding, I'm sorry, we bought, we were able to fill another reading specialist with our Title I funding. But there is no coach currently because that grant was only one year. And we did lose the point-five MLL coach.
Okay.
Through budgeting last year.
We did?
Yes.
Okay. I don't remember that conversation.
Along with the technology coach, that position was posted in Title II. And we weren't able to continue because we didn't have the Title II funding until very late, probably July. So the position went up at, went, was eliminated prior to the end of the year.
So the school committee did not make that choice, right? I don't remember raising that choice.
We were waiting on funding. If you remember, Title II was all over the place. So we, we needed to lay off the position. It was the only FTE in Title II. And because we were so unsure, the funding, we didn't even know until the end of July that we were definitely getting that funding. So there's no way through the job fair situation that we could keep that position as is, not knowing when the funding was coming through. We didn't finally get approval till mid-September fiscally and programmatically for Title II.
So, okay. Any other questions?
One, one more, sorry, that's my last one. And then the other two things that were on that, you know, intervention things that are not on this year was, last year, it said that we were going to be reviewing, that the equity belonging community gave a quarter, I know that position's open right now, was going to review the subgroup data. Reimagining summer school and that there were going to be instructional rounds. What is the status of those?
The summer school again is, is partially grant-funded, so as we go through budgeting, that will need to be considered in order to keep.
That would have been last year though.
But I'm talking about like, these were the interventions, right?
Yeah, so we're talking about this, you're talking about last summer, summer, right?
Like they, last, last year's presentation, these were the ways that they were going to address these. So like, are they not planning on addressing it?
Got it.
No, no, we also knew that, you know, you'd like to see new and fresh things up there that aren't consistent. Because we had carried those through year over year. And oftentimes, there was a what new things are you doing? So we determined to, this year, build a slide based on new initiatives moving forward.
Well, some of the, but it still contains some of the old things. So I'm just wondering, like, were you not doing, are you not doing these other things anymore?
No, the three things were summer school, which, which will carry based on financial.
Yep, reviewing the group data and instructional rounds.
Those, those are all still a go for this year.
Thank you.
Those are all my questions.
Okay, I have some questions.
Go ahead again.
So the first question I have is that to Erin's point about bringing us information pre-budget, which would be helpful. I remember when there was a discussion about, for instance, GEMS net for NGSA, you know, like that. So do you have any, and I know that it had very positive feedback from teachers. Is that something that we can revisit about, you know, is that helping us to improve our NGSA scores, our science scores? Are there, you know, the things that we budget for, are they, can we see the data eventually in the future about whether or not they are beneficial? Or, you know, should we just continue something because it's not working, that kind of thing? So just kind of something to throw out there, if we could keep track of things that we budget for, how are they working? What's, what is the feedback from that? The other question I have is that there is the MTSS framework. And I, there's a lot of talk about students who struggle, students who get interventions. And of course, then there are the, the high-achieving students. I, I'm always concerned with the students who are just right in the middle. Are there any strategies, any interventions that we do for those students? Because that's probably a majority of the population.
So that's specifically why our, our intervention block at the elementary is called WIN. And it stands for what I need now. So that's whatever the student needs based on the, the core curriculum that is happening. There would be an enrichment opportunity, a practice at the grade-level expectation, or a remediation provided. So that can be flexible and changes as, you know, if they're learning fractions one month and then long division the next. Based on the individual students, how they are achieving within that area. So that's constantly looked at and opportunities are provided. We have many software products that provide individualized, you know, they go up and down with the student as they need to and provide that. And also teachers that are monitoring those to provide the, the, the support they need to move on to the next level, the explicit instruction that they need to move on. So lots of things in place to make sure that students are getting just exactly what they need.
I would also add this, so when it comes to, when it comes to what you're referring to, the, the, the tier-one instruction, right? The core instruction, which is the instruction provided for all students. That's something that we, we, we constantly focus on. One of the things, you know, I mentioned there was the on-demand writing initiative, which is something that is happening in all classrooms. All teachers are engaging in professional learning around that and, and having conversations around effective implementation, effective instruction to all students around, around the writing piece. The math piece that I noted as far as the building-thinking classrooms and the, and looking at, you know, the engaging students in mathematical thinking. These are strategies, instructional strategies to really target all students and bring all students into the practice of regularly thinking of, mathematically thinking on a high level. And having strategies to unlock that. So, so yeah, it's a very good question. And I think that's really what it comes down to, is having those conversations around our core instruction and what are the best practices that we see coming through in practice.
Okay, thanks. And then just the last question, I know we talked a lot about the subgroups. And I was just wondering, are you all focusing on the, the gender gap? The gender gap seems to be really great. In one instance, there was like a forty-three percent difference in one grade level between male, female. So is, I mean, I, I just feel like, is that going to be something that's also being focused on, given that that seems to be a large gap?
Do we want to pull up, do, uh, do we want to pull up the slide with us?
Let's find. I believe it was.
It's on the ELA one.
Thank you. It was seventh grade, I believe, we'll see.
Oh, I mean, I was just looking into the subpopulation one.
Yeah, we don't, we don't confirm that, you missed it. Did you look someplace else for that, that breakdown? Because we don't.
Yeah, it wasn't in the foundation.
The only, if it was just the total.
So what I.
The whole district, yeah.
Yeah. We don't have that. We don't have that by grade level. What we have is.
So that's, it's just a general question, you know.
Yeah, so we see a gap there with female to male and ELA. I noticed it's kind of the other way with math, it's fifty-six male, forty, fifty, forty-nine female, yeah. So yeah, it's something to consider, definitely.
Okay, any other questions in the committee? Okay, so again, I'll connect with Dr. Duba over during timing, but I did make some notes about some follow-up pre-budget cycle. So we'll, we'll connect on when that makes sense. And I noted some of the things that the committee members made, so we can include those. So anything else on this? Okay, and again, thank you to the teachers and the students for their hard work on taking these. I know they do a lot of preparation and then the day of is a lot, so good job to them for working hard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Duba, next presentation.
Yep, we have Mrs. Taroki and Mrs. Pippelstein from the high school to provide an update on our AP courses.
Hello.
Good evening, thank you for having us today. We put together a visual presentation for you, which is pretty much what is, is on the screen. So we'll kind of, just kind of go through that. We'll be happy to answer questions and we'll just kind of point out some highlights. There's a little bit of a story pretty much on every one, but we'll just kind of touch up, touch up a little bit on, on each one. What I wanted to point out for the very first slide here is from twenty-four to twenty-five, there has been increase in the number of exams and the number of students. Normally, when you notice more students taking the test, you normally see a little bit of depth, a little bit of the scores dipping downwards in your overall. But we're very happy to report that we actually went up, even though the number of exams taken and the number of students increased from twenty-four to twenty-five. We have been in the past few years kind of really digging onto the AP data with the teachers, kind of talking through where we see the dips, what we can do, what kind of instructional supports we can put in place, how we can support the teachers, how we can support the students. So we feel like while we were trending in the eighties, as you can see in the last few years, we feel like we're starting to see the reward of that now. And we're starting to see more kids accessing the test and also scoring better. So we're happy to see the result. I just broke down individual scores for you on a, I did give you some more. If you want to really look at individual data, they are on the next slide, but on each of these. So this is our R, two-D R and three-D R. If you look at the trend lines, it compares for the last five years and then also compares to the state and global averages. Again, so that's, that's the odd one. We're going to move to biology. Again, biology, you can see we're trending upwards. The state and the global went up a little bit, but we have been also consistently moving up in AP biology. I feel free to stop me if you have questions on the individual ones, we can talk a little bit more about it. AP calculus, this one, we had a look into it a little bit. We generally, our, our mean score is generally above three. We did dip this year with AP calculus. And when we looked into this a little bit more, what we noticed is we had one section of students that did outstanding. They were all fives. And then we looked at the other section and there were significant number of twos and ones in, in that course, which overall brought the average down for, for, for the AP calculus. And they were, they were separate sections taught by different teachers. So we kind of are looking into that. Chemistry, we have been trending upwards. Once again, compared to the state and global, we have done really well from twenty-four to twenty-five. You can see how the state and global kind of stays where it is, but we, we've gone up. Computer Science Principles, once again, our enrollment for this CTE pathway had, was declining a little bit. And we've put some, we've made some changes and we have put some exciting competition and opportunities in there. And we have, again, consistently, our trend line is going upwards for principles. The one, the one course that we were struggling a little bit, that we had to put in more efforts was Computer Science A. It is a hard course to teach, but we have, we have a change of a teacher. She's taken over this course. And so once again, we're hoping that this two-point-eight continues to go upwards. It was, it was, we were significantly in the last few years below state average, which is not the norm for any of our AP courses. So we, I know we have kind of worked on that a little bit. And while it looks stagnant, we are hoping it continues to go up. English Language, our kids, obviously, they just do really well with reading, writing, very proud of them. But again, we had a very significant increase. There was a pretty significant increase for the state as well. And so we were happy to see that we are continuing to rise there. Literature, again, same thing, as you can see, pretty consistent with from how state performs. And we have been, we have been pretty consistent as well. Environmental Science, this, this particular course, we were unexpectedly seeing a little lower results. This course is generally very accessible. Students generally score, should generally score really well. It's not a very hard course like physics or chemistry. So we kind of put some efforts into it. We did, we did, we did make some changes, some significant changes. And we're happy to see, we're happy to see that we're, we not only performed well from twenty-four to twenty-five, but we're, we're hoping to keep this trend up. This was our first year where we offered French. So we have not quite made it above the state or global average, but this was our, our very first shot. So this is just baseline results for us this year for French. AP Music Theory, again, these, this course sometimes does not run due to the number and a number of enrollment of students. Some, they can take it every other year if needed. So we have, we have, we have kind of jumped from two-point-six-seven to three-point-five, which is significantly high with the same number of students taking the course. Physics one, again, we have, we have gone up with physics. This is a hard course. And we did have some work that we had to do since two thousand and twenty-three. We were kind of a little below three. We wanted to see our, our goal was to get it up to a three and higher, so we've been happy to see the results. Physics two, also a very difficult course. Once again, we were kind of working to get about that three. And so happy to see that we've gone up in this as well. This is the second year for AP Pre-Calculus. When this course was introduced by College Board, we kind of replaced it, replaced it from the honors pre-calculus course that we offer. So students can take the regular CP pre-cal or they go direct to, to AP. So students can take the regular CP pre-cal or they go direct to, to AP. We don't have honors offering anymore since we have, uh, taken this course. We haven't really seen a, a whole lot of decline of enrollment. We still see the same number of students accessing the AP course and are, are doing really well. And our teachers go on professional development because it was a new course and had, have had great training. And so we're happy to see that. We always do really well with psychology. We have, we have three or four sections running every year. Our students are very interested in psychology and, and, um, and they do well. So again, upward trend. This is just Spanish language and culture. Once again, trending upwards. Not much to say there other than the state and global kind of stays pretty similar from year to year, but we keep on trending upwards. So that's, that's a good sign and we wanna continue that. We did go up in statistics. We were happy to see. We did have to make some changes there. We've looked at the data with the teachers, dove into it a little bit, made some, made some changes and are happy to see. Once again, we were hoping to, our goal is, was to kind of get back to the, the average mean of three and stay above the three. So we're happy to see that. US government and politics, again, it's a very popular course among some very passionate students that we have. And while we went down from last year, we are significantly staying above. As you can see, state and global, once again, if you look at twenty-four and twenty-five, they are pretty much consistent where they stay. And we are still, we are still above, although we did decline a little bit compared to last year. And again, our AP scores are going up. Very happy to see that. We have had a significant jump this year from last year. So that was, that was also good to see. And then this slide just, I know Jen, you had asked that a couple of years ago. So since then, we have been maintaining data on how many students access the course versus how many take the AP test. It's not mandatory to take the AP test. You can take the course without the test. But really, we kind of encourage students to take the test. The whole point of taking the course is to take the test so you can show proficiency for college purposes. So we always encourage them to, to take the course. But besides, I think there were only two statistics and physics two are the only courses where we do see a lot of students feel like they don't wanna take the test. It is a hard course, but they also probably just, you know, we are trying to figure out, are they just not feeling prepared? Or are they just bailing out? But other than that, most of our, most of the students that take the course have a pretty high percentage of actually taking the test.
Is pre-calc on there or am I missing it?
You know what? We probably don't have pre-calc on there because we missed it because we won't even offer it for the last two, last two years. So I'm glad about that.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just be curious because I imagine they take it earlier in their career. So I'd be curious to see if it had any percentage difference. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we also don't have French on there.
Awesome. Thanks. I imagine it's like the Spanish one where the French teacher makes them. Like that Spanish is a hundred percent. So I'm gonna guess that one's probably close.
Yeah, the one course that does not run every year is the, the hard, the hard one is the Spanish literature because we always have a really low enrollment. And while we wanna run it, it always ends up being, being cut because of enrollment. I figured, I knew there was a ask for AP presentation, but I figured I would throw in the SAT, PSAT. So you can just take a look at overall our, before I go into that though, I wanna, I wanted Jackie to kind of share with you. She's worked really, really hard with some of the professional development that RIDE has offered. She's been doing a wonderful job of trying to figure out how many AP courses, how many teachers are certified. She's trying to make sure that there is at least two teachers certified for each course so that when a teacher is out on leave, the kids don't suffer. You really have to be, the college board really wants you to have certified teachers teaching those courses. So she's done a good job. And then she's also done a really good job in number of students accessing the course. She's also done a wonderful job of bringing more AP courses that are exciting that you will see in a couple of years. You will see those because they are new this year. So I just want her to talk to you about that.
Thank you. So as Chevalli said, I've been working with Mr. Mizanati, with RIDE on the AP framework, with it, which is really just an initiative to open up higher level learning for all students and to figure out where those access points maybe are, maybe are barriers to students being able to enter college bearing credit courses during their high school years. And so in that work, we've aligned with middle schools to kind of get a sense of how do we message early on so that they know what to prepare for, they know what opportunities might be at the high school level. They know, we call it view to AP. So in all of these courses, there's, in most of them, you know, prerequisites that they would need to take in order to get there. So we wanna make that information clear early on. Some of the middle schools have been working to maybe integrate pre-AP ideas or preparation. So we're trying to work together as a district on that vertical alignment as to like, what is it that we offer at the high school and how do we open that access? We've also added yearly AP information sessions. So it's in May, myself and the AP coordinator and any AP teacher that wants to attend, opens up an information session for students and parents to kind of come and get a sense of what it is that's expected, what the rigor looks like per course, and also get an idea of what the contract says and, you know, their obligation. But it's been a really great turnout. I would say over a hundred participants in, in the last couple of years have attended. And I've gotten a lot of great feedback as to, you know, the families and students feeling a little bit more prepared as to how they can message to their students and/or plan their four years here, including AP courses. So that's been going really well. Again, it's, it's been more about aligning and, and messaging as, as to what our students and families know is available to them. We've also met with all of our AP teachers kind of in preparation for this as to try to get a sense of what the barriers might be from course to course. So not every course is different. AP art or AP biology might have different prerequisites. So for example, AP bio, they have to have taken biology and chemistry. So that's difficult if that student maybe didn't prepare themselves prior to. But how could we add more courses or add more of an understanding as to what courses students might be able to take without some of those prerequisites? To get an idea of what it feels like to be in a college level course? And then maybe that will be an entry point to further courses later down the line for them. So we worked with all of the teachers to figure out how can we open, you know, the ability to get into the courses, remove any barriers, support them in the process and make it clear to them what the process is to get into those courses. In addition to that, we added courses. So we sent out kind of a survey to students to see what interest they might have. And so we piloted, as you guys remember, we pushed through the pilot this year. Thank you all for approving our ability to do the pilot, AP seminar and AP African-American studies. And those have been going really well. AP seminar has two full sections that are running right now. And based on feedback from parents and students, we decided as a district to allow AP seminar, which can be taken in tenth, eleventh or twelfth grade, to replace their English credit. Because one of the concerns was, you know, they really wanted to take the course, but they also have to take these English credits. So we didn't want them to have to double up and that may have lowered enrollment in AP seminar. So now that we've changed that, that enrollment blew up really quickly and that's been really exciting. AP African-American studies has, I believe at this time, ten students enrolled in it. But we've heard a lot from students that they're really excited to take it in future years. So it, that will be part of the formal program of studies proposal this year to actually get it into the program of studies so that students can choose it in their course selection rather than kind of going into the pilot. So that's been going really well. And those two courses, they don't have prerequisites. So AP African-American studies, for example, ninth through twelfth graders can take it. And this is a really great opportunity for them to get in, to get an idea of higher level learning. And maybe that can be an access point to other AP courses after that. And same thing with AP seminar, there's no prerequisite. So they can get into it and experience that higher level learning and potentially get the college credit attached to it. The other things, let me just make sure I have, so we met with teachers, info session. And then the other thing that we did as we've been working with RIDE with the AP framework is, it wasn't just AP courses that we wanted to look into, but any college bearing credit, college credit bearing courses that we could offer to all students just because any higher level access is really great. So as RIDE regulation shifted from having a technology requirement to a computer science requirement, we partnered and integrated a class into, intro to data and computing science that we will have all of our ninth graders and/or whatever time in their trajectory they take it, take this course to complete their computer science requirement and that will count as college credit. So they're already getting college credit if they pass the course, regardless of if they planned on going into an AP course or maybe another course that may have had higher level learning and/or college credit associated with it. They don't have to take it to complete the requirement, but it's offered and we push through training to make sure that everybody can take it. Eventually in the next couple of years, we're slowly phasing it in. So really it's been, how can we open up access to all of our students? How can we promote AP and/or college credit bearing courses? And how can we listen to the students and the families as to how to best do that and partner with RIDE to inform how we do that moving forward? So that's, that's kind of like a recap of all of the things we've been doing with AP and, and current courses. Dual enrollment. You're welcome.
All right. I mean, we'll, we'll be happy to answer questions, but I just wanted to go get through a couple more slides here. This is again, our SAT reading, writing scores for the last five years. Obviously, twenty-four, twenty-five was the, the most recent score. This is our SAT math. And again, you know, we, we always, if you looked at the graph prior to the nineteen, nineteen, twenty, you would have seen we were always at around sixty percent. Since the COVID year, we have gone down and we are trying to get that back up. And we're, we're working on trying to, during our common planning times, the teachers are delving into that breakdown and trying to figure out what area, is it the heart of algebra? Is it the geometry piece? And year to year, what they are seeing is it's different each year. So they are not really able to hone down, hone down an area that we can just kind of focus on and make the scores get better. But what they are seeing overall is just since that COVID year, it has kind of kept declining a little bit. And the, you know, we, we are stagnating a little bit here, but we would really like to, to start seeing that, that number go up. One of the things that have come up in doing this data dive is that there is, there seems to be a big retention issue among math learning that students may not be potentially retaining information that they have learned in lower grades coming as they go up. So that is definitely something that we're talking about in the building, thinking classroom, professional development that the math teachers are, are going to. So hopefully, hopefully we can keep learning and working and, and, and help, help the students out with that, that math. This is just tenth grade, our tenth grade students take PSAT. This is their reading, writing. Again, it was, that ninety-three was kind of not the normal trend. If you look at the years prior to that, it was always around eighty-two, eighty-four. And again, that's the more recent. And then this is the PSAT math, pretty similar to the SAT math. And then this year, this is not through RIDE. This is something that we decided to administer for our students is ninth grade. When they come into ninth grade, we actually test them for eight, nine PSAT to kind of just get a baseline. And this was kind of telling. This was our first year of doing it. So what we are seeing here is the kids are coming to us at sixty-five percent math. But then, I know this is not the same cohort of students, but what we are seeing is they're kind of going down as they are going through the, the, the four years of high school. So we really need to kind of work through why that is happening, why is it, why is it declining? I understand that the material becomes more difficult, but that's what we are supposed to do well, right? We're supposed to keep them up. So that's definitely, this data for the first time has been very helpful and we're gonna be continuing to collect this each year. This is our science testing results. Again, we lurk right between fifty and sixty. There was a, a year in twenty-twenty-one that we were higher. But normally, if you look at the, the state one, it's pretty consistent. It's right around thirty and we are right between fifty-five and sixty. In, in looking at the data breakdown, what the teachers did find is that this test is sometimes, one year heavy in chemistry, another year it's heavy in physics, another year it's heavy in biology. So you never really can tell which subject area they will concentrate in. The hardest one obviously is physics. So last year, last year, when we talked to the students, they said there were a lot of physics questions and we were kind of not having it happen. And then this slide, just an accountability overview. This is how we did as a school on our RIDE report card. Those are the different categories. So school quality and student success. We were at thirteen points with a, the, the highest we can get is thirteen points, which gave us a star rating of five percent. Diploma plus is a category that they calculate those points based on each student accessing AP dual enrollment courses or industry credentials. So if those, each student, they look, they literally go through each student and that gives you a point if they have taken AP courses. That gives points to the school. If they have taken dual enrollment courses, it gives us points. And then if they don't have either one of those, we still get points as a student if they are accessing some industry level credentials. So if they're graduating with some kind of credentials that helps them make a career growth, that does count as well. So we actually worked on that category. We didn't do as well and RIDE had, we had invited RIDE a couple of years to help us kind of sort this accountability data and say, can you help us out? Because there are complicated formulas that generate those points. And one area their recommendation was to kind of work on the diploma plus. So we did. We were, we weren't scoring as well. We were at four stars. I think we were scoring three points or four points in the past years. So we kind of worked on that and that, that kind of helped us with earning a, a point more than we did in the past years. Graduation data, again, four out of five points, giving us five star rating. Achievement and growth is not only the ELA and math scores, but they also look at, they take two years of data together. So they look at, did the students grow from PSAT to SAT? And if they did grow, that's how schools get points. So it's, it's not just achievement, it's also growth that counts into that. And we are fourteen out of seventeen, earning us four points. And then the last one is the ELA proficiency for students that are MLL. Again, last, the year before this, we were at two stars with our students not making much growth. But again, we, we don't, we did make some changes and we did kind of like work hard with that. But I don't wanna, we don't wanna take full credit only because RIDE did change some criteria that helped us as well in that category. So overall, RIDE gives us a four-point, four-star rating because they consider you are only as good as your lowest star. So that's that. And then finally, this is, I figured I would just share all the data. Finally, this is our by literacy data. This is the test students take for a language other than the language that's native to them. And there are four different categories and the, the dots represents how the state performs. And obviously those bar represents how we perform. And this is actually really, really good data only because if you look at the interpretive reading part, which is the hard, the hardest part of the language, our kids are doing so good. So that's that. And then I'm not sure if you have this PowerPoint, but I gave you that link that takes you right to the portal where you can do all kinds of things. You can pull five years' data. You can kind of see how we do against other schools. You can pull groups and all kind of fun things, which I know you all love doing. So that's that.
Thank you.
That's our presentation.
Thank you both. Questions from the committee?
I just have, let Megan go for assistance. Thank you. I actually just had something that I found to be very encouraging in your presentation, which was about, when you talked about the APs, how you're now starting to work at the middle school level. Because in, not just with APs, but with other classes, I'm specifically thinking about eighth grade math, algebra. There are so many times that middle school students, obviously being young, especially when you get to sixth grade, it's your first time seeing grades. You know, and then by the time you hit eighth grade, if you're not, if you haven't achieved the level of, let's say, for instance, eighth grade algebra, that sometimes limits what you're able to do then when you get to the ninth grade, the prerequisites that are required to go on. the prerequisites that are required to go on, ultimately to take AP courses. So I find it very, I think it's a really good move to now move your, all of your information down to the middle school level. Specifically, I would encourage you, I'm sure you're already doing this, but to be in touch with the guardians, the caregivers, so that, because, you know, you can talk to the students, but obviously, they may not have that maturity level to understand how important it may be to always really do your best at this level because, you know, you're going to mature in a few years from now. And then you may end up being a math person who is not able to take the courses you want to take only because maybe you struggled in 7th or 8th grade. You didn't get into that course. So, and I'm just specifically thinking of math because I know that there is almost like a track in 8th grade math. There may be other things as well that, you know, if you're, if you don't have certain grades, you can't get into certain levels. I know that like with my own children, it was always like, you know, one of my sons is a math person. And so he always had it in the back of his head. I got to do well in math so that when I want to take the APs, I'm able to take them. And it's just because of the prerequisites. So just giving those people the education, and I literally mean like explaining to them the information that they need so that, you know, if they do want to hit certain levels of AP, they know what prerequisites are required of them.
May I respond really quickly to what you're saying? So I completely agree, and thank you for upholding that. One of the things we've been doing is working with Barbara Marr and David Flanagan so that collectively, the administrators are messaging to families. So once we really strategize what that looks like, it'll come from their building leaders as well so that everybody has that information. And then the other piece of it is, yes, we do have a baseline of, we suggest that you have received this grade in your previous course, but we do and have message now in the program of studies, the appeals process, because we never want that to be a barrier. And so basically, if a student maybe didn't hit that, their teacher can't necessarily recommend them, but they do say, if you want to appeal it, you can speak to me or whomever is in the teaching and learning role. And, you know, as long as I speak with the family and we look at the larger picture and we make it clear what's expected, 90% of the time, I'll work with the family to say, yeah, of course, I'm not going to be a barrier between you and this, but this is what to expect. And so we're really also opening that opportunity of the appeals process, being very clear to the families. Just because X, Y, and Z didn't happen, we don't want to say, no, you absolutely cannot access this course.
And actually, to your point, because this actually happened with me this year. You were very upfront with us about, you know, this is, may not be the best course for you or your teachers. And I think it's great because you're not, you're not acting as a barrier. You're actually making sure you don't set the child up, the student up for failure. Because, I mean, there is just reality of some courses where if you do not have the foundation and you don't have that background knowledge, you aren't going to be successful. You know, I'm thinking of like the AP seminar, the new course, that it's English, it replaces an English class. But obviously, you also want students who understand that. So they're not just kind of like, oh, I'm going to take this because it's new and it's fun. So all of that information just to have, just to provide to the students. And then if they choose to do the appeals process, they, along with their parent caregiver, guardian, decide that they want to pursue it, you allow them the option. But with the caveat that, you know, we just want you to know this may not be the best course for you.
Right. And we've also done where we have said, let's enroll you in there, you know, if you feel very confident. And then at progress report time, we meet with them. We kind of go over. We have feedback from teachers. We'll talk to the student. And then they have the option of being able to switch because we give them extended time beyond the ad drop period if you're accessing like an AP course, you can change levels.
Or the opposite, where you've said you have the ability to take this next year, junior year or senior year, you still have time. So again, just having them understand that you're not maybe blocking them out from the course. It's just, there may be a better time to take it.
Other questions? Or neither, Megan? Jen, did you have one?
I did. I just had a question about, and I also thank you for opening up the access to more students just in general, not just for AP, but just, you know, broadening the ability for students on all ends of the spectrum. I noticed that the number of tests that are being taken were going down in English composition and AP music theory. And I specifically was questioning the AP music theory. When you gave this presentation two years ago, it was the same thing, and the scores are kind of like this. And knowing that we have ACTE in music, I'm just wondering if there's any correlation between, you know, why that test is kind of, you know, going down and the scores are maybe not so great.
Yes.
In the interest of time, maybe we'll ask some questions and follow up.
Yep, you can follow up. That's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then my other question was, and I know I had asked this before, and I wasn't sure whether it was, I was told it wasn't available, then I'm hoping it might be different now, is how our scores and our statistics relate to other districts that are similar to ours? I don't know if that information is publicly available or if it's privately available, if you can find it. And how the statistics of the students who take AP classes in our district reflect the demographics of our student body as a whole? I'd be curious to know that as well.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a similar question of kind of that same subcategories that we provide for RIDE CAS of like students, you know, like those same, like things, kind of taking a look at that and seeing what that demographic.
Yeah, we do get that breakdown on College Board, and it's definitely something we can.
Yes, follow up with an email, that would be great. I appreciate it, just curious on that piece. Any other questions regarding the presentation?
No, thank you very much.
Can I say something quick?
Yeah, of course.
Really quick. I just want to thank our two presenters, Chival and Jaclyn, for their work. I just want to add, and piggyback a bit on what was mentioned by the committee. AP is super important. It's a wonderful program. Our kids do great. But I just also want to emphasize the fact that advanced coursework can come in many different forms, with AP being one of them. And we have many different ways which kids access advanced coursework beyond just the AP College Board way. They do it through early enrollment and burdened college credits. They do it also through credentialing with career programs and things of that nature. So I just want to recognize the fact that that's a really important part of the comprehensive experience we have here. AP is a wonderful program. We're very proud of it. But we're also really proud of the fact that we offer extra advanced coursework opportunities for kids in a lot of different ways.
Do we have any data on that? Like how many students take dual enrollment courses and how many achieve a C or better than them?
We do. We, if they take it through the ACN course with us, we have the data on that. Yeah, we can share that.
Get some follow up on that too. Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. Citizens comments, first one up is Holly.
Hi, Holly Quinn. Just wanted to talk about a couple of different things and bring up. One of them is the vision of a learner. I had some concerns about that. I know it's already a done deal, but I just wanted to bring up for the parents or anybody that watches the video a little bit after this that in the shift overview, at the very bottom of the six pages that were presented is the last sentence that says, "Our work will be undergirded by the existing equity imperative within the district and by structures that help us to identify and work to dismantle how white supremacy culture may be showing up in our design." So with that said, there's some questions. And I don't know how you guys, maybe you guys have the results for this stuff, but I don't know how you gauge all of this. But the fact that we pay 60%, ours is 60% more than Lincoln is paying for this. That one year became three years. It was grant-funded with Title II grant money that honestly could have been used for other things, one of them being what was brought up earlier and/or take that grant money, put it towards somebody, something else. Take that money and maybe put it towards the issues with the buses and the bus monitors. I think the money could have been better spent. That's just my attitude towards this whole thing. That six pages that was in there led me to go to the website of Core Shifts. And I got to tell you, it's not nice towards white people. That's my opinion of the whole thing. And I don't know why we need this or where. And again, I don't know where the results are from all of this, but I just wanted to bring that up. Second, when it comes to policies, we brought it up before, that the policies have been kind of a mess for a while now. And, you know, Erin even confirmed it when she said that when she came on, this isn't quoted verbatim, but there was no defined who. There was not transparent or inclusive of a process. She said, I really had no clue. Which brings me to, what does that say about policies in general? But what does it say about one of the longest sitting members on the school committee, Jen Lima, when it comes to issues of policies? And that brings me to the Policy Subcommittee and the vote and how that went down. I understand, and Kenny, I applaud you for taking the, you know, I'll own it, I'll own it. The form was sent out, it was highlighted. I thought it was this, I thought it was that. But you kind of conceded to all of it. And I think somebody could have offered an olive branch, say, okay, we're at here, and I understand what happened, but, okay, you really want this person? I think I can agree with that, knowing you have the ultimate decision. And it wasn't done that way. It was like, nope, not doing it. It was, you could tell it was personal. And to Mr., and to Rob Case's point, when he was bringing up, it was brought up about the policy, the person for the Building Subcommittee, he said it. It wasn't personal for me. It should never be personal. And when we make comments up here towards like school committee or whatever, these comments are based on a job. It's not based on anything personal. We don't know you're personal. So we're doing it based on a job you were elected to do, and these are how we feel about it. This is our place to say it. That being said, the way it was conducted and handled with Pam was absolutely a personal issue. And that's wrong, and it needs to be worked on. All I keep hearing about are the words of diversity, equity, inclusion. I keep hearing those words thrown around. She's more diverse than anybody I've ever met. She advocates for more than anybody. She shows up more than anybody. I don't know, and this has nothing to do or reflect upon anybody that was voted in because I don't know anything about them. I just think that the words that you use, you really need to practice them. Put your money where your mouth is because there isn't any diversity. There isn't, there is no equity, and there isn't inclusion. She may think differently than you, but there's nothing wrong than that. You should actually embrace that, maybe learn a little something from it. You have the ultimate say, and I want you to know that the people in this district, the families, support you and we're behind you. We see sometimes the way you're treated. We see the way you're spoken to. Not right. We're hoping for more change. We're baby stepping as we go. We get a little bit closer every year. But know that we support you and we're behind you, regardless of what happens in here, or takes place, or how you're spoken to. Know that we support you in this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Pam.
Pam Panero. At the last school committee meeting, I heard comments suggesting that I don't support all students. I want to address that directly and clearly. Inflammatory rhetoric like that used to shut down disagreement is exactly where things need to change. We cannot be so stuck in our stances that we leave no room for adjustment, discussion, or understanding. With such a vague comment, it's hard to know exactly what was being alluded to. However, since that lens seemed narrow, I can only imagine it referred to my vote on the 6th through 12th grade health curriculum at the Wellness Committee. I did not support that curriculum at that time because there was no piloting of it. There was no second public forum. One of the explanatory videos had no audio, and there was no willingness to compromise on the language used to describe reproductive systems. Just as we say, parents and guardians, there could have been a way to respectfully use female reproductive system and body with a vagina. That's not being exclusionary. That's asking for clarity and inclusivity in language that represents all families and perspectives. As the quote from Braveheart says, uncompromising men are easy to admire. But in real life, progress requires thoughtful compromise, communication, and respect for differing opinions. And as President Barack Obama once said, "You can't constantly lecture people without acknowledging that you've got some blind spots too, and that life is messy." Both of those ideals remind us that leadership requires humility, the willingness to listen, to reflect, and to understand that none of us has all the answers. And let me be clear, I have stood up for all students. I've advocated for academic rigor and for the continued recognition of the top 10 ranked students in NK when it appeared that tradition might not continue. Some could argue that not recognizing those achievements would itself be failing to support all students by denying our best and brightest acknowledgement they deserve. I've also argued for compromise in the district's grading policy. Even though I'm generally not supportive of unlimited retakes, I proposed a balanced approach, one where retakes could be appropriate in middle school and in some high school classes with clear communication about when they would or would not apply. The policy may not have come to pass yet, but it again demonstrates my willingness to find balanced and measured solutions. I also want to acknowledge that many of my policy suggestions made through public comment have been listened to and implemented. So there has been collaboration at times. It just hasn't been consistent. I want to see that spirit of partnership applied more evenly because that's how we make meaningful progress together. In the climate of the world today, we need measured leaders, people who are not so rigid in their stances or unwilling to collaborate with those who think differently. My exclusion from the Policy Subcommittee is evidence of the very opposite of that spirit. I do hold strong convictions and beliefs, but I also strive to listen to all voices and reach balanced, thoughtful decisions. That's what leadership should look like. Many times, my concerns have been around process, communication, and the lack of compromise. These aren't personal grievances. They're calls for consistency and collaboration. When those values aren't upheld, it affects not just individuals, but the trust between leadership and the community. I think most people who actually know me would say I'm a kind person. I'm compassionate, and I'm caring. I'm a dedicated mom. I am far from perfect, but when I make a commitment, I follow through, and I do my best to give everything I have to that commitment. I was hurt by the comment that I don't support all students because it is not who I strive to be, and it's not who I am. When individuals run for office, it isn't to represent only their own personal beliefs and values. It's to represent the people of this community. Unfortunately, what we've witnessed this year feels more like members representing themselves rather than the students and the community that elected them. So let me be perfectly clear. Advocating for parent inclusion in the education system does not mean I don't support all students. It means I believe every voice, It means I believe every voice, parent, teacher, and student deserves to be heard and respected. If we truly want to model respect and collaboration for our young people, then we must stop using divisive labels to silence one another. We can disagree and still work together for what's best for our students. That's the example we should be setting. Thank you.
Are there anyone else that would like to speak for citizens' comments? I think we'll pass that down to Stephanie. Um, let's go on to the superintendent report. Dr. Duvva.
A few district highlights. At the last meeting, we approved that Hamilton would be a Feinstein Leadership School. And in just the few weeks of them being so, they've started a few initiatives. One is a Feinstein Junior Scholar Food Pantry, as well as a Feinstein Kindness Tree, where names of students who do kind deeds are added to the leaves. So we're already starting off doing some great things for this community and recognizing their students. Yesterday, today, we sent out a notification to the district. We also received a copy that the high school is being recognized for a National Special Olympics banner. The Special Olympics International has announced that the North Kingstown High School, a school with Special Olympics Unified Champion School programming, has received a national banner recognition for its efforts to provide inclusive sports and activities for students with and without intellectual disabilities. North Kingstown High School is receiving this distinguished status as a result of meeting 10 national standards of excellence in the areas of inclusion advocacy and respect. We are incredibly proud that North Kingstown High School has been recognized as a national unified champion school. This honor reflects the dedication of our students, staff, and families in creating an inclusive environment where every student is valued, respected, and given opportunities to succeed, both on and off the field. This recognition from Special Olympics International speaks to the heart of what makes North Kingstown so special. Our unwavering commitment to inclusion, compassion, and community. Our students lead by example, showing what it truly means to celebrate differences and build a school culture of respect and belonging. This is an honor for the North Kingstown School District, and a celebration will be planned in the near future where a national unified champion school banner will be presented to the North Kingstown High School community. So you will all be invited, as well as other people in our community that is right now tentatively supposed to be scheduled for December. On Friday, October 10th, we held professional development for the district. In the morning, professional learning was individualized for each level in content area. At the middle and secondary level, the focus was on content curriculum development. Some examples are Open Saiad for Science, the MAP, High Quality Instructional Techniques that deepen mathematical learning, and Curriculum Mapping and ELA. At the elementary level, the focus was on the MTSS and the Branching Minds Platform to write intervention plans. And in the afternoon, all district staff participated in student-led professional development focused on the competencies of the vision of the learner. High school student leaders guided staff through meaningful discussions and activities that highlighted real-world applications of these competencies and their alignment across reinforcement.
Okay, questions regarding the superintendent report? Okay, thank you, Dr. Duvva. Moving on to routine items. Does anyone want to, sorry, first disclosure that there were no votes taken today in executive session. Can I get a motion to seal the executive session?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to exempt anything from the consent agenda before we take a motion to approve?
D1.
Okay. D I.
D I.
An I, no, I mean, all right, anything else? Okay, here, now we'll take a motion to approve the rest of the items, so B and C. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item D, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to take a minute and thank Lydia for all of her work over the years for the district. She's going to be sorely missed. She's been a valuable resource and advocate for the families in our district. She's always gone over and above what's been required. And I also want to note that while the federal funding for next year is uncertain, the students who are currently served by the Title I funds are not going anywhere. So the need for this position is still going to be there.
Any further discussion? Okay, here, now we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to reports. Any questions regarding the financial report A1?
Can I make a motion to move up new business? I'm going to do a couple, but right now.
I usually try to get through reports, but you can.
Because I have a lot of questions on the reports.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move up new business C. Release of titles.
Okay, can I get a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor moving that item to be the next on the agenda? Item C under new business, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and so we'll go to that next. I need a motion for that item.
A motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay, any questions regarding the release of titles on bus S26 and S14?
I had asked for the updated information. We requested a few meetings though to be provided.
That's my fault. She had it and I was meant to send it to you before the meeting and I didn't.
Sending it now isn't going to do me any good.
I know, but I am going to send it because, because you did go through it earlier.
So I'm not prepared to vote on this because I didn't get that information.
So any challenges if we don't approve this today?
Michelle Hume, Transportation Supervisor. Yes, because S26 is actually being retired and they want to get another spare bus. So right now, we only have three in operation for field trips or anything prior to when the frontline buses would be finished for the day. So this would add a fourth to our line. So the sooner we get this title, the sooner they can trade the bus in and they can purchase a new bus for spare entrips.
Do we have like information about that?
There's no contract attached, there's no anything.
The spare buses don't have contracts historically.
Well, nobody has contracts in theory.
True.
Should I, right? But they don't have anything?
No.
So why am I having to give one back?
So. I'm sorry, I missed that part of it.
So if we don't have, if we don't have the titles for the sub-buses?
We have the titles.
My guess, my guess is that we actually have the titles and this would be sort of part of the documentation of transferring the title back.
This doesn't even say who owns the, who we're giving it back to.
Ken, I gotta, I gotta wait on this one, because I don't think it's going to pass.
So can I ask you, Michelle? So we don't have agreements with those buses, so basically they just give us the title without us giving them a sort of agreement.
So I, I have asked many people, and this has been like ongoing over the last few months, because it confused me a little bit as well. But with the spare buses, they just, they purchased the spare bus, so they have it in the front. They have it there. If their frontline bus should go down, they have it as a secondary bus. They have it there. So they can fulfill field trips, athletics. It's not a bus so that they have a contract or that they ever had a contract. Their contracts were from their, for their home to school.
But this documentation doesn't even say who you want us to give the title back to.
I, it's on the spreadsheet.
Was that, was that the email that was sent? I, I feel like there was an email forwarded that we.
There wasn't, there was an email, probably.
At 10:30 this morning. Well, I got it by 10:30 this morning.
Did you get that?
That was S14, because now S14. So S14 is not up for this tonight.
Motion table, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Okay, moving on.
Can we just go back so we know? So I, I just want clarification.
I'll be happy to follow up with you on it. We've been abundantly.
I will tell you why, because there is a request to return a title, but it doesn't say who the title should be returned to.
I just want to make sure that is.
Yeah, I can follow up with you tomorrow on what is missing, but there's a bunch missing, I think. So we'll have to circle back from that, I'm sorry. Okay, going back to reports. Financial reports, A1, can I get a mo, oh well, I don't need a motion. Does anyone have any questions on the financial report as presented?
Yes. Sorry. I just don't make sure I'm answering the thing. Can I talk about the check register? Or are we just doing?
I was doing them, yeah, that's under the.
Because I feel like, yeah.
The three things are under there.
Yeah, okay. So, Dr. Duvva, I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer these, because.
I know, I know we did send an email that Leslie was going to be here and answer questions prior, just so they
I know, I just didn't get a, because that was yesterday and I was working all day, so I just.
I just, I'll follow up with you with the questions.
Oh, okay. So should I hold off on the questions then?
No, say it in that way.
In the interest of time, do you want to just email? That way you don't have to write it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So if anyone has any questions regarding the things under the financial report, just email Dr. Duvva and we'll get a response. And we can either put it back on the agenda if discussion's warranted or if you feel satisfied with the agenda. The information that you received via email, then we don't need to.
Okay.
Anything else on that one? All right, so again, email questions to Dr. Duvva regarding those items presented. Okay, moving on to B. Advisory Subcommittee Reports. I have the CLEC report. So CLEC met and the North Kingstown School Department Administration provided updates to CLEC about the state of special education in North Kingstown, including updates on trainings, the playground at the preschool, and the Momentum Clinic. The group also discussed possible guest speakers for the year and determined that they would aim to have one at every other meeting. Some topics that they are considering are things connected with student trusts, bullying, and transitioning through the year, kind of what families can expect. They also discussed the updating the bylaws. And a draft will be presented at the next meeting. And they also discussed utilizing the CLEC Google Drive via like the school department to keep consistency when chairs change for documents, et cetera. They also talked about concerns regarding making sure our late buses are accessible to all students as well as concerns regarding ensuring lifts on bus work and backup plans for when they're down. The administrators present so that they would follow up on those items. And then they discussed promoting CLEC more to try to help families understand what it is. Ideas included getting the meetings into all of the school newsletters via the principals, as well as continuing to discuss it at IEP meetings. Other ideas were perhaps something visible like a magnet or something that people could put in their fridges to have the information about CLEC. Other discussions were about how CLEC could provide support. Some of the CLEC parents have been offering casual coffee-like connections in, at a local coffee shop on Saturdays. But they also talked about maybe doing some sort of like mini micro mentorship program for parents who might need support from their peers. And then they talked about how they are continuing to connect with external training and events for CLEC leaders. The state runs some things and they have been attending. And would like some clarification on if they are able to meet virtually as they believe that they would help, this would help attendance and they believe that some other CELCs are meeting across the state. So the administration, our president at that meeting was going to follow up with district attorneys. So that is the CLEC update. Any questions regarding that update? Okay, here, now we'll move on to unfinished business.
Can I make a motion to move E and F under new business up?
Thank you.
Second.
Do they kind of go together?
Yes.
I mean, Sam's been saying that so for a while.
Yep. Okay, so can I, so we have a motion to move E and S to the next agenda item.
Second.
I'll give a second. All those in favor of moving the items, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Hi, Sam.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Yeah.
Well, I used to be the last guy in here, so.
Steph, can you send Stephanie?
Yeah, I'm working.
Well, while we're doing that, maybe. What, I thought you were going to change. I was, because they're not ready, so.
Is it the OPM update?
No, it's the procurement process.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to go back to the original agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then I'm happy to entertain another one when we're ready, but I want to try to maximize our time. So item A, we're going to skip.
Correct. Superintendent review?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Actually, just, should we do a motion table?
Yeah.
Motion table, yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then item B.
That's going to take a bit. How about we do unfinished business E?
You got to make a motion.
And make a motion for unfinished business, move up unfinished business E, level three grievance?
Second.
All those in favor are moving?
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion for item E?
I will make a motion to overturn the denial of the grievance and affirm it. I will make a motion to overturn the denial and affirm the level two grievance.
Second.
Level three.
Level three, sorry. Let me restate that. I'm going to make a motion to overturn the denial and affirm the level three grievance.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then. Okay, move, um. Make a motion and move something else.
B. How about new business A?
Can I get a second?
Second.
To move that up, correct?
Yep. Okay, so motion move new business A up. We have a second.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion to move up new business H.
Can I get a?
Second.
What was it? I'm sorry, John.
Your business H.
Yep. So we have a motion, a second for that?
Yep.
Can I get a motion, all those in favor are moving, say aye.
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 Okay, and then can I get a motion for the actual item?
I will make a motion to approve with the changes as discussed in executive session.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Stephanie gets to pick because of time. Okay, any further discussion? I just wanted to thank the committee that reviews this. It involves both administrators and town folks, for lack of a better word. And so thank you for their time, as well as, I believe, the principals. So we appreciate that. Any further discussion? Okay, here, now we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next one?
Make a motion to move up new business G.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor are moving that to be the next item. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Duvva, I think I motion for G.
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, so, Dr. Duvva, anything you want to speak on G? It's the, if you haven't kept up with our moving chaos. Mr. Wes and Audrey, anything that you want to know before we request?
Nothing much to note, except what's on the recommendation. I'm sorry, the memo, as far as the recommendations are concerned. Yeah, so.
Okay, any questions from the committee? Okay, and then can we confirm that the policy procedures were followed in getting to this place?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, here, no other discussion. We'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and then. D?
Yeah. Move up new business D, or make a motion to move up new business D.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all of those in favor are moving new business D up to the next item. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That was me. Yeah, so I just, because I feel like they were happening before I got on the school committee. So I just want a little background, because I had a couple residents ask, like, how do we pick the topics? Who, like, just kind of about the business hours.
Yeah, so I, I can start. So basically, the school committee office hours are not something that are deemed by any policy in the committee, but it was something that we started, I think, when I, it was, I was on the committee. I think it was, but so one of our goals was to try to connect with the community more, hear from the community, et cetera. And so office hours never exceed two members of the school committee. And so they're not official meetings of the school committee, but just another opportunity for the community to connect with school committee members to talk about whatever they'd like.
Andrew just sent it to you.
But recently, we have been putting like some themes to try to generate some interest, because sometimes a lot of people come and sometimes no one comes. And so we were trying to just think of like different topics. So the past two, we had put like suggested themes that we were looking at, but there's no real.
Okay, I think it was just people were asking, like, then there's no minutes from it. How are the opinions, you know? And I, are we actually fairly, like, are we all, like, I only went to two last year. And who's taking the topics? Like, should we have a more formal way that we're doing it just for the community to? Or should we have, like, could we put notes from the meeting and just post them somewhere?
So I went back and I looked when I saw this on the agenda. So we, in February of 2023, we discussed this at that school committee meeting, because the town council had been doing it. And so we discussed at the school committee meeting that we were going to, it was a motion that we were going to offer office hours monthly as an opportunity for the community to have a conversation with a school committee member outside of a formal meeting. So that's when we started doing it. So we started it in March of 2023. And it looks like they've been kind of consistent, like, almost every month since then. And like Eric said, sometimes, I won't say a lot of people, it's only ever been a lot of people once. And sometimes it's no people and not all once.
No, 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 you didn't, you were not the one that was busy. We had a couple.
Oh, yeah, the two of us.
Yeah, and then one other time. And not all school committee members opt to participate. So we rotated with the ones who opt to participate. And I went back and I looked, and since this body has been elected, there have been one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and it's been split, two with you, two with Rob, and three with Eric. So we try to rotate it like.
Okay, have you not wanted to do that?
But.
Okay.
Which is fine. Also, there's, so I wrote down some of your suggestions, though. Like, I know, we definitely can talk more about formalizing it and about report outs of like what that could look like. I think that they were intentionally casual, like, but that we can definitely think through some of the things that you brought up and decide if we want to make it more formalized or not. Um, I think that they were intentionally casual, like, but that we can definitely think through some of the things that you brought up and decide if we want to make it more formalized or not.
I mean, I have no problem, like, adding it as, like, an, like, nobody ever asked, like, I have no problem adding it as, like, an advisory report, I'm just saying, like, four people came, three people came, like, these are the things, like, that.
Yeah, that might be, yeah, just because I feel like we have the meeting on as, like, we announce it, I think that's why some people were, like, it's announced, but we don't really know what happens at it after the.
Yeah, like, I mean.
Even though, I get it, like, we had one, no one came, so maybe just put, okay.
Yeah, we're happy to, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, so I think I'll just kind of.
Yep, any other questions?
No, I think it's good.
Yep, so, yeah, and if there's any other suggestions in the future, Sherry, definitely feel free to share them, because again, it was one of those things that, after I was elected in that fall, like, we were really trying to think of different ways to have folks engage and whatnot, and so, um, always open to suggestions and ideas. We're also not limited to one, so, you know, a month, like, I think that's what we had been doing, but like, if we wanted to host two, if we wanted to host different topics, if we wanted to host no topics, like, there's nothing that limits us. The only thing that limits us is that.
No more.
It has to be less than two.
Right.
Yeah, so, so, super open to that, um, and, uh, we can definitely implement the report out, so, um, Stephanie, well, when we have the agenda, just like the advisory committee report outs, we'll put office hours, and we'll do very, I think it's important to do really just theme level, um, because if we want to kind of, if they're coming to those, they might not want, like.
Yeah, not like Sally came and complained about.
Yeah.
No, but it could be, like, three people came, and, you know, like.
Yeah, so kind of general.
The topic that was discussed was.
Yeah, and there's only ever, like, last month was the first month we did, like, a theme, like, as an attempt to, like, call people in, like, the hope was that, like, if we picked a topic.
Did work.
We got some folks that were interested in that.
So we'll see.
We can add the report out for that one next time, too, so we'll do the last two.
Sounds good.
Thank you for asking.
Thanks.
Okay.
Now, now can I make a motion to have E and F moved up?
We certainly can. Sam, y'all? Um.
Second.
Okay.
They look ready.
Hi, Sam, welcome back.
All right.
Good job getting through whatever we got through.
Wait, do we have to?
I think we have to.
I think we already did.
All right, so we made a motion to move, so all in favor of moving, say aye.
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 All right, and then I need a motion.
To discuss E.
Second.
All right, Sam.
Good evening, Sam Bradner with the Paragon Group, uh, owner's project manager for the, uh, bond projects. Um, this evening, and I think you have this in your packet, this is the presentation we made to the building advisory committee, uh, at the beginning of the month, and we're just gonna walk through these steps. I, I believe the superintendent also included some backup information about the outcome of that meeting, as well as next steps. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and really, the goal here was to provide an overview of the different options for construction procurement specifically for Wickford, the Wickford Middle School project. I think we've talked about this a little bit at the school committee level, certainly we've talked about it in a fair amount at the, um, at the building advisory committee. There's really two main, uh, approaches that we would recommend for a project like this. First is design bid build, or a general contractor approach, and the second would be a construction manager at risk, and I'm just gonna walk through very high level of what those processes look like, and then we've prepared a conceptual schedule that is really just meant to be illustrative of how you would walk through these two varying options and the pros and cons of that. Uh, and with the building advisory committee, we wanted to give them as much information as possible, really, to kind of decide which, uh, procurement approach they wanted to take. So next slide. Um. The design bid build process is relatively straightforward and linear. Um, the, the general contractor comes on at the end, or the conclusion of the design, uh, process. Right now, that's projected for sometime about a year from now, in the fall of 2026, um, and they are really selected on their lump sum number. I think a lot of the work that you guys have done in the past has been in that lump sum bid, just design bid build approach. I've seen procurement, even in the few meetings that we've been in front of you, where you've made those selections, say, for some of the emergency fund requests that you recently just did, uh, for materials, or for some other small projects that you've done in the past. Um, the, in, in this process, the general contractor does not participate in any of the pre-construction activities, and that's all, all those activities between now and, uh, and next fall, uh, much more linear. Um, when that bidding process comes in, we try to do some level of qualification for the bidder, usually the size of the project, also kind of flushes out, um, larger contractors, which this would be, you know, these would qualify for. Uh, so it really, again, it comes down to that, that lump sum price. Um, but as an owner, you have no exposure to our understanding as to all the numbers that make that up, so the general contractor has the ability to make their best guess based on the plans, based on the schedule, how they can give the lowest possible number, and hopefully win that bid. Uh, but you don't see any of the exposure of any of those line items within that over con, all, overall contract. Uh, and then at the end of that bidding process, you would enter into a lump sum contract with that owner. Um, if we go to the next page, you'll see a lot more notes on this, because the construction management process is a little bit more involved. Um, for starters, the construction manager would come in early. Uh, our recommendation is if this body is in agreement, that we would engage in this process almost immediately. And the selection process is a little bit different. You select really on a combination of qualifications, so, um, and then I think, you know, your architecture selection that you just did with DBDW, where they were selected, that was a qual's based selection. However, there will be a monetary piece, which is for their pre-construction fee. That fee is to cover their work between now and the time you actually break ground. And in that period, that construction manager really becomes a third member of the project team, the project, uh, process. Uh, they are engaged throughout the remaining steps of the design work, so for the schematic design, design development, the construction document prepar- preparation. They're looking at things like constructability, they're looking at things like schedule, and one of the most important things is they are preparing cost estimates in lockstep with the AE team's estimator. So instead of just having one number that's kind of moving through the process, you have a, I would say, a much more data-driven, market-driven, um, project, you know, relevant projects that are in the market today, the contractors bringing those to the table to really inform what that cost estimate would look like. Then the two parties reconcile, uh, these are usually days and days of reconciliation that we do between the two estimates, to really come up with one reconciled number, and the whole goal there is to say, are we all talking about the same stuff? They may have difference of opinion on pricing, but really just to make sure that we have accurate, uh, assumptions around linear footage of materials. How much labor has to go into that work? How long will it take to actually do that work? Um, so there is certainly a lot of value add. Uh, while that process is going on, they're also evaluating whether there are packages that would be beneficial to put out on the street early, so that you can actually improve your schedule or keep your schedule. Uh, so elements such as, uh, site work, uh, foundation work, utility work, that could start ahead of the final design documentation being completed, uh, allows you to kind of accelerate schedule or make up time. It also will, potentially would allow you to, um, prevent you from starting construction at the start of the winter, which we know is always a challenge, and right now, we're kind of aligning with that, just based on the completion of our documents. Uh, at the end of that design process, then the contractor is doing a fully open book transparent bidding process. They go out to the marketplace, they bring back those results. We typically want to see a minimum of three bids, sometimes we see more, sometimes we'll see less, depending on how competitive the marketplace is, or that specific trade is. They'll come back with a leveled bid from all of the concrete contractors. The project team will be able to evaluate those and make a selection, so, uh, different from the general contractor lump sum bid approach, you have full transparency into the process, so you see all those bids, you get to be participating in that selection process. Uh, during that timeframe, we're also developing what their staffing requirement is, what their overhead requirement is, what their profit requirement is, and that's a full negotiation that happens throughout that process. When we do the RFP, that, that's step one, we're asking them to give us indications of what they think those percentages will be, so that we have a gauge, then we can really start to think through that process as, as we go through the design work. Um, so, you know, we talked a little bit about schedule flexibility, we think that's important. Um, this does come with an increased, uh, staffing model, uh, through the general conditions, the general requirements. Trade costs are usually relatively in line, say, with a general contractor, uh, but where you see some of the premium and, and the potential uptick in cost is, is really in kind of that, that different management approach. If we can go to the next slide, please. And what we've done here is really, you don't have to pay attention to every sa- every single date here, I think the important thing to see is this construction manager at risk is on the right side, indicated with the blue, design bill, the build, general contractor is in the orange, uh, and you see how early the construction manager at risk is getting involved in the project. So they are stepping right into this process with us. Um, if we were to move forward with this, we would want them at the table, hopefully in about sixty days, um, so that they can really be participating in every step of the process going forward. They may not be able, if, if we do start this, they may not be able to be fully engaged in a, in a schematic estimate, just based on the timing of the approval process that we'll have to go through with the various governing bodies, but we certainly think that they could be part of a peer review of the estimate that's prepared by the architectural engineering team. And I think the important thing here, too, is that this schedule starts to contemplate some of that early release work, and what you see at the bottom is really where the difference in the substantial completion date is, so, and again, these are estimates, projections, but we could see a substantial completion with the CM process happening maybe in the spring of twenty-eight, versus, uh, with the general contractor lump sum process, could be pushing into late summer, even into early fall. Um, we know that mid-year moves are not preferable, uh, for a turnover of a building. We happen to be doing two this year, so it's, it's not that they don't happen, but our goal is always to be working with the ownership team, the project team, to deliver where you're opening up the new building, consistent with the beginning of that new school year. So, again, this is, this is meant to be illustrative of the, the different approaches, the dates are not, uh, perfect, and they will change the minute that team comes in the room, but I think they really just help to illustrate kind of the differential that you might see between those two processes as, as you contemplate that procurement approach. Uh, and then the last slide, please. Um, so next steps, and again, we, we had this presentation about a month ago, or, or, or back at the beginning of the month, um, you know, if, discussion around that procurement approach, we certainly have been in communication with the ownership team about, you know, the different ways to go. Uh, the, the building advisory committee did vote unanimously to support the CMAR. If we went designed bid build, then we could just kind of continue to go through the process and wait, although we would strongly recommend that if you did not go designed bid, or you did not go CMAR, then we would strongly recommend bringing in a third-party estimator, which would also be a, a cost in a procurement step. Um, if it is the CMAR approach, we are actually ready to pull the trigger, uh, instantaneously, if, if the, if the committee is ready to make that commitment as well. Um, and I believe the superintendent did include a little bit of an outline of timing of how that process would unfold if, uh, if we do decide to take that, so. Uh, I'll stop talking, happy to answer questions, uh, or Kenny, I don't know if you or the, anybody else from the district wants to add any detail to that.
Yeah, I just reinforced that at the building advisory committee, um, we did take a vote of the committee members, making a recommendation to go with the CMAR at risk for the procurement process. Um, that's what we're looking for approval for tonight. I outlined, uh, timeline for you regarding the, um, RFP. Um, if this is approved tonight, the RFP goes on hidden tomorrow, so we can start the process.
I have one question on the timeline. So these were the asterisks, what were the asterisks?
Yes, so, um. Sorry, I'm just pulling it up. Those asterisks are there, um, because if you look at the school committee approval and the town council approval, they are not lining up properly. Um, if the RFP, who, well, not the RFP, but the award, um, would come to the school committee first, then to the town council, but if you look at the dates, the school committee meeting is on the sixteenth, and the town council meeting is on the fifteenth. The town council, um, is not meeting on December twenty-second anymore, when they updated their calendar.
Okay.
So originally, beginning of the year, when we looked at everything, we had dates that.
I have this on the next agenda, though.
So my request, and I put it there, is can we move that school committee meeting to the week prior? So that way, we meet on the Tuesday prior to hold a school committee meeting, so that way we can also, you know, have that approved.
No, we can.
No, 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 but that's why that's there, and then.
Okay, the that answers my question, okay. Yeah, it'll be on the future agenda to discuss.
So if not, it's gonna go to town council first, and then to you.
Well, there's options, we'll figure it out. Can I make a motion to approve the building advisory committee's recommendation?
Second.
Okay, any questions from the committee, or any further questions? And so this is, okay, yep, so we're on item E one, um, okay, hearing no other questions, we'll call, uh, the question, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and then we'll move on to F. Can I get a motion for F, please?
Make a motion to approve?
Uh, so that was just for information.
Just a discussion, right?
It's information of just discussion, then. And are there any questions other than what I already mentioned?
For F?
Yeah.
We don't need to approve opening an RFP?
Because we approved E, then the RFP, so it's already approved.
You don't approve it? That was just, that was information.
Andrew, can you confirm that I don't need to approve opening an RFP?
I think you approved the RFP.
No, we approved the recommendation for the way we're going in item E. My understanding was that we need to then also vote on F, because we could have said yes to E and no, like, you know, like.
Yeah, but when we talked about this last time, you said that the school committee does not have to approve the RFP.
Okay.
You're approving that we're going, you're approving the type of procurement process, you don't need to approve the RFP, we're gonna put the RFP out, what comes back to you is the approval of the award.
Okay, so.
Otherwise, we'd be bringing every single RFP to you for the district.
Sure.
Which would be.
So can I get a motion to discuss then?
Sure, so moved.
Okay. Okay. So any additional information that anyone wants to provide on that? Do we have a timeline of the RFP assessment?
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about when Jen asked the questions about the town council's committee meeting.
Okay, so we were just miss, got it.
Yeah, it was just.
Um, all right, so any further questions regarding that item?
Yeah, so then we'll have to figure out going forward what the timeline.
Yes, it'll be on the next agenda to, to consider what we'll do there. No worries, just in there if I had. All right, anything else on F?
When does it close on business? When are we expected to?
November twelfth is the projected date right now for receipt, and then we would enter into an evaluation, probably a two-week evaluation period, and then bring that, those results back, building advisory committee, school committee, town council, whatever that sequence would look like.
Yes, so as recommendation to.
The building advisory committee December third.
Their meeting's on December third.
Uh, the building committee is December third.
Great, any other questions on the timeline?
No.
Okay. Um. We'll go, thank you, Sam.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh, we will go back to D, yep.
Policy.
Good God, all right, yep, B.
New business?
No, I don't think it's where we are, we're in.
Undecisive of the policies.
Yeah.
Page one thirty-three.
I will make a motion to discuss GCB, whatever it's called, uh, non-union benefits.
Second.
Uh, this is the third read of an existing policy which covers the employment terms of North Kingstown School District employees who are not covered by a collective bargaining unit or fall outside of other defined subsets that's defined within the policy. This policy has been updated to more clearly define certain areas and includes proposed changes to, among other things, retirement, tuition reimbursement, salary computation, longevity, and merit peg. Since the last read, we have added language to require, require contracts for all non-union employees, and to add a requirement that this policy be disseminated and acknowledged by all current and future hires.
Okay. Do we have, do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just made a motion to discuss.
Okay, perfect. Okay, questions regarding this?
I have a question, um, Dr. Duvall, for the, uh, the leadership assessment, I, I, I'm just wondering, are you okay with the length of all of those assessments that you would have to, the evaluation?
Yes, that's what I've been using.
Those come, those came from back to Duvall.
Yeah, that's, and that's typical, like, that is something like other districts use as well, so it's, it's a lot.
Seems very cumbersome and a lot.
And again, those are not part of the policy, just to clarify what we'll be voting on, those are provided to us, but they are not technically part of the policy, so at any point, the administration could change those, we, all right, that's just, they're referenced, and so we ask for them to be provided, but we are just voting on the policy.
Okay.
So I actually would like to, um, suggest that we remove the reference to them from the policy, because, um, I, again, we had talked about this at the last meeting, and I thought we had agreed how we were going to change the, uh, line about the, what had, it had to do with the hygiene, but it did not get changed to what we, I thought we had agreed we were gonna change it to. So I'm not comfortable.
Thought we did change.
I thought we had left the meeting saying we were gonna remove the words after the.
The parentheses.
The parentheses, and that's not what it got changed to. So I'm not.
But that's not in the policy, or is it?
Well, we say that they are going to be evaluated based on, um, what the.
Yeah, you're referencing the documents.
You're referencing the documents.
In theory, the school committee doesn't have authority over the documents, so you're saying, take it out, but it will still happen.
Correct. Um, so I'm not comfortable voting to approve a policy that links to an assessment that is evaluating somebody on their retirement hygiene.
Ken, was that an oversight or intention, though?
No, it, it changed, it just did not change to what we agreed that it would change to.
Still ask, Ken, I don't know.
I'm, I'm telling you that it is not.
Yeah, but I, I'm curious what, Ken.
Yeah, I'm just looking at.
Are you on, um.
So we're on page.
Page one sixteen.
Yeah, one sixteen-ish. I thought we had talked about removing the parentheses and also adding it to the other evaluation, so they were the same.
Um.
Because there was one thing that was in.
It was in the one, but not in the other.
Yeah, and we did, just didn't get changed on here, so. And it was, remember, the, have the conversation and just saying, just take out what was in parentheses, but that's not a difference.
But, but it, like, it, it didn't take out what was in parentheses, the whole blurb got changed.
But that was, that was, I think that was from earlier, though, because that's what we had.
Oh, you had changed it, but you didn't revert it back, I hear what you're saying, and I don't think it got added to the other one.
No, not yet.
All right, so the first question, I guess, Ken, is, like, are you okay, I'm like, will we be doing that? Like, are you okay with that change? Because if you're not, and you don't have to be, like, you can say, no, I want, like, this.
I just wonder that, only because I don't have in front of me the original with what we were taking out.
But weren't you just saying that at any point, the administration can change it, change what's in these evaluations? Change what's in these evaluations anyways? So we're technically not voting on that part of the policy?
I guess my, my preference is, I'm, like, they are asking us to approve a policy that specifically includes that they are being evaluated on that. And like, my point is, I'm not comfortable saying yes, like, you're being evaluated on this policy. If it's, if it's not even referencing the policy, then, like, they're doing whatever it is that they want.
It does reference it, we just don't control what Exhibit A is, is what I'm saying.
Right, so it's like, is it the part that's like C, evaluation?
Yes, yeah, so administrative employees will be evaluated using the NKSD Performance Report for Non-Certified Staff, Exhibit A. And then Supervisor 1 employees will be evaluated using the Leadership Assessment, Exhibit B. So, what Jen, I'm gonna hear Jen say, and then Supervisor 2 will be evaluated using RIDE Evaluation System. So what I'm hearing, I do think we should connect that Exhibit C, though, I would...
Yeah, Exhibit C was a specific request from the committee.
Yeah. And so, I think, Jen, what I hear you saying is that you'd like to remove all of that because you're not comfortable with what the evaluation says. But then, if you remove all of that, then what happens in the policy is that they are not...
No, what I'm saying is, when we left the last meeting, we had come to an agreement.
Yeah.
And since they did not change it, I'm fine with all that. So if they, if they will go back to what they agreed to, I'm fine with leaving it there.
Can I ask a crazy question? Do we have to reference what they're evaluating, or can we just say they're gonna evaluate them?
I think the goal was transparency for the employees so that they understood, like, what it wa, like, like what the rubric was that was, they would be evaluated on, like, via the policy, and to create consistency so that, like, not that Ken would ever do this, but a superintendent in theory could use, like, one evaluation for Rob, a different evaluation for Jen, a different evaluation for Megan, and there would be nothing to stop that. And so I think that's where the policy piece came in, for consistency for employees and transparency. In theory, no, though, right, like, you could just make it more general.
Because I feel like that's where it gets a little, do you know what I'm saying? Like, if it, if it, I get what you're saying, Jen, but I'm like, I think that's where the, it's not connecting.
This was not in here before, the prior version of this policy did not say...
Did not have...
Did not have a, like, reference to a evaluation tool.
All right, so let's pause for a second, Ken, what's your thought, and then the committee will make their decision.
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying, that we talked about last time, was removing in parentheses. I just want to, I wanna be able to look at it again, because...
Let's just table it, then.
Yeah.
Well, do we, yeah, but do we, all right, but why, but do we need a table of the policy if we're talking about the evaluation, which you don't need to approve evaluations, you have to approve the policy?
So we could remove the whole section regarding evaluations?
I'm not comfortable removing, I'm not comfortable removing it, though, is what I'm saying. And maybe if three people are, that's fine, but I feel like that...
No, I agree, I don't think we should.
For that consistency for the employees and the transparency, I think it's important to leave it in, is what I'm saying.
I, I was gonna say, we could remove it, pass it, and then add the evaluation. But if you wanna just hold it, we could do that.
I would be more comfortable withholding it than repeating the work, because then we have to go back to first review, second review. Like, once you approve it, we have to go through that whole process, it has to go back to policy.
No, I know.
Not to push the table.
Second.
Before we do that, can we have discussion regarding the rest of the policy? So, so that we, if there are any other things that we want the administration to follow up on, we have the ability to do so?
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. You, so, is there any other, because we talked about that one thing, and that was your thing, Jen, but I wanna make sure if there's other questions or comments from the committee, that we hear those before we move on.
So the other two things that were added were the contract and the signature.
Yeah, which, I like the way those sound.
Okay, so that is good.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
No, but then I have a question, is it only, I mean, if Jen's the only one that has a problem with it, we could still vote on it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I don't, because I, I do think you have to be professional, I mean, you're being an example for your students. So, I think it's fine.
Yeah, so we can just take a vote. Um, other questions on the comm, the policy? Another follow-up note I had was about the contract piece for it. That had been a question, Ken, about you were gonna follow up on...
We, we did, I drafted a model contract, I think I got it to Dr. Dewey the Friday, it wasn't even Monday morning. He called me with some questions just regarding the length, but we've got a template done, we just need to, and I, because Riley had identified the employees currently, I didn't have it. So we've got the contract done, we just need to make a couple of tweaks between Dr. Dewey and myself, it's almost there.
Okay, is that referenced in here?
But do we approve those contracts?
We would individually approve the contracts, but is there something that says, like, GCB employees get a contract in this policy?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, yeah, so we added that.
We did add it?
Yep, it's at the top.
Oh, that very top part, thank you.
And then we also added the yellow part.
Sorry, the different colors are throwing my mind, because some changes were red, and some changes are not red, so...
So that was blue, and then the yellow was how all, everyone current, and then all new hires will sign, saying they acknowledged it.
Do we wanna say, though, that there's a, like, default, like a, like, we just say that there's a written contract? Do we wanna say that there is a, like, standard?
But there isn't, that's, I mean, because what we did is, I think, seven, seven, six. Six, six employees don't have any contract right now, so they're technically at-will. So, what I did was just come up with a template contract, really just to address those six.
Okay.
That is, it, you know, but that's gonna be different than some of the other GCB people who've got different contracts. The length may be different, that's what Dr. Dewey and I were discussing, yeah.
So this is it, then, okay.
But it'll be good to have sort of a general contract that you could use for going forward for other positions, so...
Yeah, that's what we're working on.
Can somebody clarify what "nothing in this policy standing alone" should, what does that mean?
Because I, what I, that sort of is a belt and suspenders for, if you're employed here, you have a written contract. You will no longer be employed just as a GCB person. You either have a written contract, and even though the written contract references some of the benefits you have here, by referencing the benefits, this policy itself doesn't create any contractual relationship with an employee. You have to have the written contract.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification, other questions regarding this policy?
Nope.
All right, we're in a motion to discuss, so people can do, move it down up there. This is when you make a motion to approve.
Oh, oh, God, I'll make a motion to approve.
Whatever. All right, so a motion to approve in a second.
Yep.
All right, um, further discussion?
So, I, I hear you about the professional appearance, but I am, I don't think they should be rated on their hygiene and attire, and if they are, it should be across the board, and right now, this does not have it in both assessments. So, I am a no until that gets resolved.
So, Ken, just to clarify, did we mean not to do it, because you don't fundamentally agree, or was it like, oh, cross-communication?
So, I, I fundamentally do not agree with it. I think we should be setting examples for the students and the people here, we are a professional organization, and I think it's very important that people come to work professionally, and...
So you're changing what you said last week, just to clarify? Because you had agreed, I thought, last week to change the parentheses part, not in a good or bad way, I'm just trying to keep up.
Nope, nope, and I, and I did say that we could do that, and then, that's why I said I wanted it seen in front of me before we change it, but I still fundamentally agree and believe that that should be part of the evaluation, and I have no problem putting it in the administrator evaluation, it's just not part of the leadership standards. The administrator evaluation comes strictly from the leadership standards. And I have no problem adding it there, because I think it's just as important for administrators to be professional in their appearance, just as, as any other employee here in the district should be dressed professionally. They should be coming business casual, what that may be. I think appearance is important, because we're here working with children, and we're working for the community, and we should appear in a professional manner.
I'm, I'm not questioning professional appearance, I'm specifically questioning, whatever the word was in the...
Hygiene.
Hygiene.
But that's part of your professional, like, how you...
It's not, though, hygiene could be the way your, your body is, like, it, like, the way it smells, for whatever reason, like, medical issues, like, it's, it's not like...
If someone has medical issues, that would be...
Again, I'm one vote, but I definitely think if it's gonna be in one issue, it's gonna be in both. When we left here last week, we had said that you were just gonna remove the words after the parentheses, and you changed the entire text, so like, if you...
And I, and I, and I will say that that wasn't done on purpose.
Right.
That was just in the mix of us doing stuff, having it, because we didn't have it there in the sample, but...
Right, and I was fine with that, like, so, but so, I'm a no for that reason, yes.
I'm just gonna say, I feel very strongly that we should, that should be part of the...
And, and I respect that, but I think it should be for both, it should not just be for one, great, remove part.
All right, any other comments or discussion on this? Okay, hearing no, we'll call a question, all is in favor, please hear aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries, um, and then we need to do the, the follow-up on the contracts. Okay, um, item C, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Discussion?
So, I am following up on a motion from the DEI Advisory Committee going back to June of 2022, which included a recommendation that all district forms and documents, including Aspen and Canvas, be updated to reflect international language, inclusive of family types, allow for multiple options for racial and ethnic identity, and to be, that they be made available in a family's native language. There was a follow-up in 2023 with the administration, again, reiterating the same request. There had been a conversation about ensuring that we had funds allocated for that, we do have a budget line allocated for it. You know, we have a growing number of households where the adult caretaker does not speak English. Seems that the greatest increase is among Spanish-speaking and speakers of different Afghan dialects. These families struggle to access written communication, they depend on friends and neighbors to help them navigate the communications that come from schools. Google Translate is not always a viable or an accurate option for regular communications. You know, there's one Spanish-speaking family in the district whose parent thought that an email that they got from the school principal regarding their child's being absent from school for an extended period of time meant that there wasn't gonna be any school. So, the English communication was not accessible to this parent, and she thought that she was being notified of a school cancellation, not that their child was being excessively absent. You know, had we had translation services more readily available, that confusion could have been avoided. It's small examples like this that compound and make accessibility for school for our non-English-speaking caretakers more difficult. If we're gonna make school an inclusive and welcome space for all of our families, then we need to have more communications available in other languages. You know, it's not just a matter of not understanding the information that's sent home. Language barriers limit the ways in which families can interact with schools. These are challenges that don't have simple fixes, but these barriers compound. So the more that we can do to limit those where we can, the better off we will be. You know, it's my understanding that we use a translation service within our scheduled, like, in-person, like, whether that's over Zoom or, like, in-person communications with these families, but there are so many other instances where it's actually needed. I know that there are district employees who, you know, have text communication with guardians who speak different languages, and but tho, and in those, some of those situations, the families themselves use an app for translation, which makes it easier, and they will reach out when they have English communications that have been sent home that are confusing, but that's because those parents or those families have the app, it's not because we are using something. And I really, like, think that we, I'm, I'm making the ask that we do a better job and that we put a system in place where we are providing the regular communication that goes home in families' home languages. We know what those home languages are, we know what they need to be, and that we look into a district-wide communication app so that we are facilitating the conversation, so that we are, like, eliminating at least one small barrier for our families that are not native English speakers.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
I have a two-part question, because we, I did not realize there was a budget line item for this. So, the first part is, it, well, if there's a budget line item, but also, then why does the memo state financial impact NA? So, I, I guess I'm just wondering, I, because...
I can't answer that second question.
Okay, well, we're the new, being new to the school committee, I didn't realize there was a budget set aside for this, so...
Or it's, it's NA because we don't know what that will be, because my understanding, this was going on to have a recommendation from the school committee for us to look into something that we could actually either have to purchase or get, get a, I can want a tech service that can do that.
Okay, so let me reverse my question then. I, I guess my question then, now, is, so I guess what's the ask? Like, what, what, are, are we just discussing this tonight? Are we seeing how we can move forward with it, like, what is...
That's my ask, is like, what, what can we as a district do, like, what technology is out there, what is available? What, what can we do, like, paper-wise in terms of the communication we send home? And then what can we do, like, app-wise in terms of, like, communication with the families in terms of actual, like, having a conversation with them?
Jen, can you remind me, what, did the school, so the DEI Advisory Committee had made a recommendation, did the school committee ever vote on...
Yes, we did.
What the action was?
Yes, we, we affirmed the DEI Advisory Committee's recommendation.
All right.
Did the DEI subcommittee, like, look into some stuff that we could recommend? Like, I, I feel like that's the problem, like, go to administration and say, hey, I found three apps that would be great, can we do this?
Because of purchasing laws, we can't do that.
You can't, you can't give recommendations of stuff that was...
Not a product, no.
I would also say that if the recommendation came three, two years ago now, two and a half years ago, some of...
Three years.
Right, three years, I mean, that might almost be anything, any recommendations might almost be...
I think that, I think it was repeated follow-up, but no execution, if that makes sense.
So why don't we make a motion then to task the superintendent, or, I don't know, I, make a motion then to...
Maybe do some research on...
Task Dr. Dewey to do research on how we can roll this out. And that's not, like, a nice official way to say it, but...
What are we rolling out exactly?
Well, I guess we're trying to find something...
Transition services?
Yes, a service that contributes.
So I think, I think the end goal...
We just said a lot of things, and we went around and around a lot.
So I think the end goal...
What's the ask is kind of my point.
I think the end goal is that somehow, we are able to provide at least important, like, communications and documents, like, I'm not saying, like, every fun flyer, but like, really, like, like, important communications to families in the language that the parents or guardians speak. And figuring out how to bridge that gap of, we don't do anything with that right now, how do we get to a place where we're able to do that?
So we don't do nothing, we, the, the, our website is fully translatable into every language.
Yeah.
So...
I didn't say we did nothing, but with documents, I don't think we're translating documents, to my understanding.
So when it comes to important documents, is it, for us to determine the importance of documents to, to have that?
I think the ask was everything, but at some point, I remember talking about, like, a tiered approach and prioritization, knowing that the ask was very large. And so I think where we had left it was figuring out what that tiered approach was.
Right, and ideally, right, like, our goal is family engagement, and our goal is to bring families into the school community. And if, if, in a perfect world, all the communication that goes out to all of our families would be available in all, it would be, the fun flyers would be available, but like, I understand that that's not reasonable. But the weekly emails that go home, like, those should be available in families' home languages, like, because they should be able to read the emails that go out on a weekly basis. So, like, that would be a great first start.
So I think, one, we'd have to just kind of break down what we need, right? One, we need a translation service that we can use, right? That we can put the letter into, and then it comes out in Arabic, or it comes out in Spanish, whatever that may be. Second, we would need to know every family that needs something in a specific language. And then, in order to send that out, I'm just thinking of the, the how that's going to happen, right? So, we have over 3,000 students in our district, right? So let's say there's 200 families that all need something other than English. We're gonna need to know specifically who that family is, at what school. And then when we put a letter together, someone's gonna have to go translate that in the number of languages we need, and then send individual emails out to those families. So that's gonna be very time-consuming to do that. I think some districts, what they do is, they look at, okay, what's the majority of the language? And when they send something out, they might send that letter out in English, Spanish, Spanish.
Okay, so how about, what if we did start with the problem, right? That's where I usually like to start.
I'm just trying to think of, like, what is that we're gonna, we need to do this.
So like, what if we, maybe, um, for the next meeting, if, if possible, like, if we had, do we have any data on this? Do we have any knowledge of what language our parents and guardians?
We can go, I think, one, we look at the home language surveys, right? So the home language surveys that we fill out, to be able to start with that, to see how many families don't.
Yeah. How many families are in Spanish, how many, you know, like, let's see what the lift is, like, of what we're trying to achieve, or who we're trying to serve, maybe as a... like of what we're trying to achieve or who we're trying to serve maybe as a first step and then we can go from there. Is that achievable?
I just wanna note that they we have some staffing on that that would be responsible for this. That's currently on leave. They're just on leave temporarily. So I'm just wanna throw that out there as far as well on the timeline or turnaround we're looking at. But it's gonna be difficult without the staffing that we have available right now. We have staffing out on leave.
I I got you. I was, do you have like a suggestion of when it is possible?
I would say.
Mind you, you all can follow up.
Yeah, I mean, we'll figure that out as far as the timeline, but also to like an app like.
So another option is.
Also looking at a communication app that staff are gonna use with the family. I'm just I just cuz you said it. So I think there's a difference between making sure that our documents that's the way.
It's true. It's in my mind, it's two-fold. It's documents and then it's also communication between like families and district employees. Like so it it is two different things.
So that way if they have to go home, child is sick, we have some way of communicating that family to let them know that they're sick and it could be something where we're gonna send an email using Google Translate, which is something that's free, that's available to put in a description, use Google Translate into another language and then send that email to the.
Yes.
Alright, so I will follow up with Dr. Duba regarding the timeline for when we can get that information about like how like what how big of a lift it is, like, you know, how many languages are we talking, how many students are we, how many families are we talking? Because I think that matters on the approach of how we might go out, right? Like if it's a very large number, and I couldn't even guess, right? If it's a very large number, that might change the approach than if it's a smaller number, like and what we would wanna do and the resources that we wanna allocate. Because at that point, if we're if Dr. Duba said like, hey, like this would be really difficult to do manually because of the scope or the number or the amount of languages, then that would be a conversation for the school committee to have of do we wanna do an RFP process for a company or something like that? Does that make sense? Okay, any other comments? Sherry, Rob, Megan? Okay. Do we need a motion? Do you want a motion or do you wanna just leave it in discussion then? I like motions because we, no, you could make a motion to like to Megan's point, like to charge the administration to determine.
Next.
No, to determine the languages that we have.
I will make a motion to uh ask the administration to follow up with uh an estimate on the number of non-English speaking households in our district and the languages and provide that to the school committee by December, the first meeting in December. Is that reasonable, Rob? I'm not sure how long.
So nu- number of non, sorry, so can you just remember?
Yes, so number of families, so it would and it would be backwards. You would start with whose family, like what did you, what was the terminology used again? Home.
The the home language surveys.
Yeah, so on the home language surveys, what languages were identified and how many?
Families.
Families were identified.
So how many and the and what?
And what? Yeah, so the to me, done would look like we have Spanish, Arabic, Japanese, Chinese and what like those languages and this many people, like this many families within those so that we'd have some context of scope and of depth of what we would need to do.
You want this data bring forward to the committee is what we're asking? Okay.
By December.
So by December, follow up with that.
So that's a motion.
So a number of non.
Well, let me have a dummy, Rob, so let me let me make sure it's our committee actually.
Do we want it by school?
Sure.
We have to go back and see how we can find this out. I'm just thinking like, I'm gonna think aloud right now, like where those home language surveys go, like we don't find out somewhere.
I was just gonna say, what information is on that survey?
Yeah, like when we find out that there's a family that doesn't speak English, where is that? Is that in a?
Well, an update can be, we need more time.
Right, I mean, is that in our.
So let's, so we have a motion, do I have a?
System or not, so.
Do I have a motion? Aye, further discussion? So we'll just, we'll take it one step at a time. Okay, any further discussion? Rob, do you need any clarification?
So number of non-English speaking families and what the language is. That's I wanna just be clear. I just wanna.
And and by school, Jen, Jen mentioned.
Because also.
By school if possible.
Yeah, cuz student does not equal family, right? Because you could have four siblings in family, right? Like so it's not.
But I I'm just saying like.
Yeah, no, I know, but like I think where are they at, where they are matters too because um for like when we're talking about like, is it something that the principals could manually do versus do we need a paid service? Do we, you know, like that I think matters if it's spread out across the district or if it's more centralized.
We can get this to you by J- by December.
I believe in you. Any other things that people want considered on that? Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, um, is that everybody? I usually can hear, okay. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item. Thank you on that. Um, Dee, can I get a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, any questions regarding the playground report that is presented in front of us or anything, Dr. Duba, that you wanna add?
No, I just I just want to thank David. He was able to get the trust out right away. Evaluate the playgrounds at Davisville Academy, Forest Park, Hamilton, Quidneset, Stony, Fishing Club, Fishing House Two. The playground, the backup miss, but they're coming up next week to do that. All of the reports that we received, David went through, we put in any work orders that of anything that needed to be done. So that's in the process of following up with everything that's in the report.
So we will see what your recommendation is for what they're what they're provided to us?
Yeah, so what so what David did was he went through the re- the report. Anything that we could do, he started putting in work orders in from our maintenance department to go in and just start to.
Like low-hanging fruit stuff?
Get.
Like the engineered wood fiber for all the schools.
But if there's any like major um replacements or anything like that, then you know, put a recommendation forward for that.
In budget set season, is that what you're saying?
So the the policy says um, should any playground or playground be deemed deficient in terms of type and quantity of equipment? But it looked like this report was purely safety focused. It it didn't really address like this playground is.
Has a slide and.
This playground is blah, like I kind of.
So the trust was coming in, so they look at purely safety of the equip and structures. That's what they're looking at when they come in.
Okay.
But is that, I guess what Jen is saying is is that what the policy is asking. Great information. Very helpful. Appreciate it.
It was fabulous information, but that's not what my interpretation of the policy was.
Because I think, Megan, if I correct me if I'm wrong, one of your concerns was um for lack of a better word, like equity between the different schools. So like, does Quid have similar things to Stony Lane, to similar things to Haring, um, to Hamilton, right? That's one of our concerns, so.
Well, also along those lines, um, you know, it it was really good information as far as safety goes. But also you all, as the administrators, as the building principals, you know the needs of the schools themselves. So for instance, yeah, if we have this like phenomenal playground that, you know, the PTO raised money for at one school and then, you know, lesser at a different school, um, you know, how can we close those gaps? Also, I you know, I still would like to during budget season, start to set aside some money for, you know, just like some some extra rainy day funds so that if something does break down, we don't all of us have to scramble for, you know, we can kind of see it coming. Um, or we have that money saved. So just to be more equitable and I think that's probably why we're supposed to. Uh, again, I still think biannually is too much, um, or twice a year, I should say, is is too much.
I think, remind me if I'm wrong on this, we put the playground policy on the long list to to circle back on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, so I but I guess what I'm saying, so as it stands right now, I think twice a year is like a lot, but.
Because I don't disagree with you, but right now.
So so when I when I asked the person from the trust that kept that was doing, I said, how often should this be evaluated? I said, it's in, I said, we have it twice. He thought that was appropriate for what he's coming out and doing for the safety of the playground to that to that be for that to be evaluated twice a year.
Which is lovely. So I think.
And I I agree. I don't think that's really our policy.
Like I think we're having a dis.
I think our policy is different from the safety.
Well, it says it says that the superintendent of school shall evaluate, of course, be evaluated all school playgrounds and playground equipment in the district twice a year. Should any playground or playground be deemed deficient in terms of type and quantity? So right there, deemed deficient.
Type and quantity is not.
Safety, appropriateness, and general condition.
Does it say quantity or quality?
It says quantity, quantity.
I read type and quantity. It says type and quantity of equipment, comma, safety, comma, appropriateness, comma, or general condition. So I read safety and type and quantity of two different things. Type and quantity to be deemed three or five swings and one.
Alright, so when we review that policy, we should clarify those words. In the meantime, is it possible to have someone go and look and say, Quid has two swings and Hamilton has six swings?
Ask someone to.
At your convenience.
So we have.
I put it on a spreadsheet. I have it. Everything that he put in the in the reports, I put in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, but I don't, I think it, I think it covered certain things.
No, he wrote down. But do we have a list of like all the, we must have a list by school, all the equipment we have, playground equipment.
He put it in his report.
Okay, so.
Then I guess you could use that to compare and then going into budget season, I guess if we feel like it's not equitable.
So why don't you share that, Jen, with the administration?
I will share the spreadsheet.
And then the administration during budget budget cycle can let us know if there's any recommendations and also we can talk about um Megan's suggestion about like kind of where the fiscal responsibility for playgrounds land and like how the district can plan for things. So we can have those, those two conversations are different in my brain, but they are both important to have of like what the what we need and then also like how to long-term plan for it. And maybe that's also something, um, you know, the building advisory committee is very busy right now, but like maybe that would in theory fall under their umbrella, correct? For long-term planning for playgrounds?
Maybe with the building advisory.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, no, not responsible, but like to at least review the, if we're doing like a str- a strategy plan, like it would go through them for their. Wand, I have like a wand in my hand, bless him. Um, okay, any, so it sounds like we've got some follow up, but no need for action on this item right now, is that correct? Does somebody wanna make a motion to do something?
No, I think.
See the budget check?
Yeah, and I I mean, I.
No, we can.
Oh, yeah, budget and finance.
Yeah, that's a good point too, Sherry.
No, I mean, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on to.
Your decision, Dee.
Yep.
Okay, can I get a motion for Dee?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, and so Ken, this is the uh twenty-five, twenty-six district goal. So do you wanna walk us through that or does anyone have any specific questions about what was presented?
Uh, I had a list that I had emailed to Ken earlier today.
Yeah, I'd rate you. I just didn't have a chance to get through all of that today.
Do we wanna use this as a first look and then have the committee email you any questions and then look at it again at our next meeting?
Yeah, if I can explain.
Yeah, why don't you just give us a quick overview, but I don't have a, I don't anticipate us finalizing this today.
Yeah.
I would like to finalize it at the next one, though. Yeah, that's a good idea.
So I tried to keep these goals more concise than less than last year. Because last year I came in with five goals like I did and through the school meetings, we added, added, and added. And I hope that doesn't happen this time again because it gets very hard to have multiple goals with multiple subsets under that. So I looked at our strategic plan, which is in its last year. It's a three-year plan, so we have to redo it next year for the three years for the district and went under each goal. So the first goal is around academic achievement and growth. So there's an objective there for growth in ELA, math, and science. Uh, reducing performance gaps for multilevel learners, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students within those categories. The indicators.
Ken, I'm sorry, Ken, in the interest of time, can I suggest you not read the whole thing because it's nine fifty-two?
Sure. So you have all that in front of you. So the the data that's there came right off our strategic plan for each of those areas. I have action steps that's aligned to the work that we'll do, what the evidence sources will be, and then timeline for reporting that to the school committee in January and June to report out how we are doing with our local assessments. The state assessments only come out once a year, but we can use our local assessments to help us guide us to that point.
I think to doing like an update check-in on in October, so I wonder if we could take a look at like we have everything that we need now to determine last year's goals, if we hit them or not, using that external data. Like I do agree with you that in June, you use the internal ones, but then maybe doing a update in October when we do receive, I guess. So if we could get that for twenty-four, twenty-five, that would be helpful.
Yep, I mean, I pull it as a final state assessment results, yeah.
Yep, perfect. Alright, any questions? Go ahead, Ken, if you have more.
And then goal two is under advanced equity access and inclusion across all schools, um, safe and supportive schools, which is what the um goal area is in our plan. In there, about updating policies, reduction of disproportionate discipline outcomes and ensuring all school improvement teams have at least two parents guardians to get on it to increase family engagement. Action steps are on there about revising student conduct policy, implicit bias trainings for the family engagement. Um, sources of evidence and then timeline um on there as well about giving us through the uh June to update policies and then mid and end of year data review of discipline activities. Goal three is on fostering safe, supportive, and connected school communities. Cultivating environments that prioritize safety, social, emotional wellness, staff-student connectedness, uh, using our data from SurveyWorks. And I think the next our next meeting is when we're going to give you a presentation of the information we received this year. Um, implementation of pre-K twelve social emotional learning continuum and PBS framework in all schools. Um, and then the Alice training and action steps there of what we're going to do to accomplish that, as well as the evidence and timeline. SCL continuing PVS systems um by June of twenty-six, Alice training to be completed by January of twenty-six. Goal four is develop and implement vision of a learner framework. So indicators of success are there around the competencies that we're working on, pilot learning progressions aligned to these essential skills, pilot project-based learning activities aligned to that. And of course, connecting all this to the curriculum. So right now in this year, um, connecting it to at least two curriculum areas. Professional learning and evaluating that system. Action steps there, evidence, and timeline. DOL competencies, we're actually already finalized that with our group, that was in October. Learning progressions by June and pilot alignment across the curriculum. They still have at least two by June. Last goal is modernize online school facilities to support twenty-first century learning. So that is all on our CIP, the building of the new little middle school. So I just have timelines in here for the stage two, the stage three. These action steps, um, evidence would be the approval through ride, facility project reports with building subcommittee community engagement records, annual facilities and capital projects, updates to the school committee, timeline, construction milestones, and community reporting through June of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so thank you so much for that, Dr. Duba. So my recommendation, in the interest of time, is the school committee review those. If possible, send any questions to Dr. Duba in advance and then we will I have the school committee have a discussion on this at the next meeting with the hopes to approve it so that because like we're overdoing something. I started in July, so I think we'll try to lock it down. But I do wanna make sure people attend to digest it and send any questions to Ken. Um, is everybody okay with that approach? Okay, great. And so I believe if I kept track, yeah, but we like got everything else, right?
Yeah.
Great, good job, y'all. Correspondents, please, in three minutes or less.
Ten-seven Tiffany M. Pam not being appointed is wrong. Ten-eight Bob Banderstyes registered for the Storm Twos workshop, November fourth for three to five P M, a hundred fairway drive. Ten-eight Karen Martone building subcommittee meeting recording from October first. Ten-thirteen Holly Quinn school committing transparency for office hours. Ten-fourteen Keith Wall suggestion for consideration. Ten-fifteen from a parent regarding transportation for Woodsford Middle School. Ten-seventeen from a parent regarding a deal with superintendent's decision for Woodford Middle School Transportation. Ten-twenty-one Robert Jones agenda item assessment score, and that's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Alright, wait, all those in here are in charge of meeting.
Hi.
Thank you. Did we, did you catch the first and the second on that one?
You can pick anybody. We'll go in.